Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Village of Westmont Board Budget Workshop for fiscal year 2013. And today is April 16th, 2013. And if the clerk could call the roll, please.
Your pro tem, Seneca?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebanow?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Village Engineer Supervisor Noriega?
Present.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
IT Manager Liljberg?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Kamak?
Here.
Fire Administrator Supervisor Scall?
Sure.
Staff Account Carlson? He was here. See?
He will be joining us soon.
Human Resource Director Casey?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther?
Here.
Mayor-elect Gunther?
Here.
Trustee-elect Barker?
Here.
Trustee-elect Addington?
Here.
Thank you. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started with our actual budget review, I would like to call for an executive session at the end of this meeting for the purpose of personnel. And with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to Spencer. I should mention one more thing before I do that, Spencer. My apologies. We'll have the staff presentations, then we'll have board discussion, and then if there's anyone from the audience or the public or staff that would like to comment or ask a question, that'll be the time for them to do so. So, go ahead.
All right. First of all, I wanted to walk the board through some of the numbers that we talked about briefly on Monday night. And so I wanted to start off in this fund summary, which is the O-1. The number is O-1-A-2013-14. And so I just wanted to, first of all, draw your attention to the projected net of negative As you're aware, this is different than the net that we had at the end of the last meeting. After further consideration of some of the input we received from Chief Mulhern regarding the DEA program, as we found out, we weren't able to know for sure if we would be able to have a position. We felt to be conservative, we needed to remove that amount from the revenues. Additionally, there was one thing the board had asked that we removed from a cut, which had not been removed, for the GFOA budget award. We added that back into the budget. And then, all of those things considered, brought the projected net to about 100, almost $122,000 as a deficit. So that's the way that we got to that number, and that's where we are currently. I also wanted to sort of run through, kind of similar to what we did on Monday night, but run through a brief discussion and hit some of the high points of the revenues, as well as the expenditures, that have been proposed thus far. So if you're in this one, if you hit your back button, and we're going to open O-2, although you can probably just see it on the screen. But we're going into O-2 Program Department Summary revenues. And so, as you'll recall, we had discussed the potential for places reading tax, but that had not been listed by the board as something to maintain in the budget. It was removed, and we said we're holding off on that for now. We have the estimated increases that are still going through, that are being carried through. We have, under clerks, the taxi cab licenses for 7,500, which was an addition at the first budget workshop. We still have the $291 going in for dog tags, the increase in the dog tag fee. And that is something that was initially listed as a possibility, has not yet been removed. Additionally, the, in the clerks' department, there's the 25% increase to $100 per quarter for the permit fees. Under IT, there's the grant for the CCTV programs. You can see in community development, again, this is just an economic increase, no change to anything. And then we have the increase in administrative toes, the reduction in the red speed, and then the general adjusting of the fees to the actual. We've carried through all of those. And then, initially, we had carried through the DEA Task Force. We'd carried through all of these initially. DEA Task Force, vehicle stickers and video gaming, and then some minor adjustments in police miscellaneous. We have now removed the B, the DEA Task Force, so that 250,000 is no longer part of the picture. But as of yet, there's been no, for as I know, no decision to remove the vehicle stickers or the video gaming from the revenue section. We've got all of the fire fees we've discussed previously, which was approved on March 3rd. We're carrying all of those through. And then, carrying through just a pass-through, that's a reduction in revenue and expenses for the extra-duty police fees. Any questions on general fund revenues?
So that was, that $440,000 that we saw on Monday, some of us had a question about the vehicle stickers. That's income for sale of vehicle stickers? How much per sticker?
So that is, sorry, I thought I had this up on the other screen. I apologize. But going through it on my computer without re-listening wasn't up here. I apologize. So the vehicle stickers that are listed here are for, the options that were listed initially was the assumption, as we talked about last time, the first number we got from the Secretary of State with estimates for the number of vehicles, we think was slightly high. It was originally estimating that there were 81,000 vehicles in Westmont. We thought that might be a little, a little bit high. Yes, that very well could be the traffic count. So instead, to, when we were doing our estimates, we estimated that, we took the number of vehicles, the number of households in Westmont, which was 11,200. If we estimated a household has an average of two vehicles, that brings it to 22,000. Then we estimated a few additional business cars, you know, for the fleets, for the businesses that are here, to bring it to roughly 25,000. If we did a $20 sticker price, that would generate 500,000. We assume there'll be, we know there'll be some other costs associated with it, such as purchasing a vehicle license module, some additional mailing costs, as well as some personnel costs, to be able to manage a program, coming to a net of that 444,940.
Now, I'm trying to remember, the survey that DuPage Managers and Managers Conference did recently had vehicle stickers. And do you remember what the average price?
So pull that up right now.
For sticker was, for the communities that had vehicle stickers?
Yes. For the communities that had vehicle stickers, the average price was $25 a sticker.
Is there any differential in trucks? I know before, when we had vehicle stickers, there was a different charge for trucks.
Yes, they generally do have a different charge for trucks. I only listed the passenger vehicles here. Trucks would be additional amounts, and typically motorcycles are a little bit less.
What I'd like to see you do is if we decide to go with the vehicle stickers, that you decrease that 440,000 by 25%, because with a 50% rental housing, that's an estimate of two, two cars per housing unit, and a lot of our large apartment complexes are single person. So I'd rather go more conservative with that and drop it by 25%.
I guess my question is the enforcement side of this. What's it going to take to enforce this? And how are you going to assure that everyone who has a car in his town comes in and buys a village sticker? How's that going to happen?
I know the chief has some thoughts on that.
We had talked about this module would integrate between our water billing, as well as people buy stickers. So it's a module that would, you know, give us a better idea. That way, we could send out more mailings to residents guaranteed we're not going to be able to go and check in individual garages to see if there's stickers. But officers, if they were to stop a resident on a traffic stop, see that the person, maybe was stopped for speeding and doesn't have a vehicle sticker, he could choose to give them, he or she could choose to give the warning for the vehicle sticker, and, I'm sorry, for the speeding, and give him like a tarking ticket for the vehicle sticker.
Not him.
Also, what we did in the past, we did have this several years ago. Officers would go out, and we would check areas as you're driving down the street. If you see a car parked somewhere in our permit lots, in our village lots. Car that registers to Westmont doesn't have a vehicle sticker on it, they could cite the vehicle. Also, in parking complexes, at nighttime, they would go through and walk the complexes. It's a little bit of a crime prevention as well aspect to it, but also an enforcement aspect.
Can you get the list of vehicles registered in Westmont through, can you get it from the state?
Yes.
Because the, where they, the plates are registered to?
Right. Deputy Chief Brinsa made a contact with the Secretary of State, and that's how we got the $81,000 figure, $81,000, $81,000 car figure. But that also could be fleet vehicles, business vehicles. You have the bus company on 63rd where you have UPS. In the past, I know that they worked like a price, one-time price for the buses, because some of the buses may swap out same with UPS. We would attempt to do the same thing. To, I believe that there is a mod, with the module, we would get, we would buy the data from the Secretary of State that would give us the information, and that would also go into that module with the water billing, as well as all who bought stickers.
Because the multifamily, the big multifamilies, they don't get water bills.
Correct. We would get, we would get the registration from the cars. However, we're sure there's some cars on that list that no longer are in Westmont. They've probably moved. And we're sure that there's some cars that have come into Westmont that are registered in town as well. Leave the ordinance in the past, where the vehicle has to be housed in the vehicle, I mean, housed in the village, not registered to the village. It has to be housed.
What's everybody's thought on taking the vehicle sticker thing and putting it in the compartment with the eatery tax? Because we haven't decided if we're going to even do vehicle stickers, and that's a pretty hefty number in the general fund right now, even if we, you know, decrease it, because I think it's, I still think it's high, because there's so many apartments that only have one car there. But, I mean, we haven't decided whether we're even going to institute that program. So we look at ballpark numbers all the time. So what should we do with the vehicle sticker number?
We haven't decided to do anything yet, so you could always stick it in that pile.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'd like to see it come out of what, there's a lot that we know is, you know, they're givens. But the eatery, we put in, let's decide this later, and I think that's where vehicle stickers should go to.
I'm fine with that.
Because the reason they got rid of it is it costs more to enforce it than we were
getting out of it. I remembered when they dropped it, and that was the big thing about it. It was costing a lot more to enforce it.
Right.
So I think that's a totally false number, because, you know, it's either that, or we're going to make people buy them, and they're just not going to enforce it unless something happens. And that's not right either. You know, we're supposed to enforce our codes.
And I also, trustee Klebanow was correct. I remember there was the issue, and I'd have to go back and look at the data, and I don't even know if I can find it.
That goes back to, I think, wasn't it Jerry?
Chief Sipcheck. But there was also, at the time, too, the village, I thought the board wanted to give the residents a break, you know, considering at that time, they wanted to give something back to the residents.
There was some outstanding, I guess, people hadn't paid, and there was some outstanding stuff. You had to try to enforce, to try to collect the money and all this other issues, so.
Do that now, currently with the red, the red light enforcement, we have a collection agency. And if they are passed through, they send it to collections, and collections tries to have, get the money from the people.
Are we still using the collection agency?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we use it for the red speed, and we also use it for our current parking tickets. If you're delinquent, if you're delinquent with your current parking tickets, if you're delinquent with your current parking tickets, you would also be sent to collections as well. Apologize for the phone.
Well, as it stands right now, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the vehicle sticker program, because I personally, myself, I think it's going to take up too much policing time to go around and do this, and have to go through the state. I think, I mean, I remember when I first moved here, back in '85, '86, living in King Arthur Apartments. The only reason I ended up getting a sticker is because the police department walked there a lot every night. But right now, as it's looking, and what we're looking at here, is staffing, and the police department alone is something that's going to be very critical. And with losing the multifamily housing thing, yeah, maybe it's an idea for them to get out and, you know, check cars, but don't you think there's more important things to do than walk around in parking lots at night, check cars, see whether or not they've got stickers on them?
Well, it's all, I've done it, and I can tell you that when you're doing so, you hide the squad car, you walk the parking lot, and you may come across some suspicious activity as well. Not always, but that's a possibility. It's a little bit of a crime prevention, as well as you checking for the stickers.
I'd like to table the whole vehicle sticker thing, too.
Let's table it, but my only thing is, is I don't trust the state, the info they gave us. And can we just make sure that the numbers includes Downers Grove addresses that are within the village?
Or Willow Brook?
Willow Brook, and probably, I think we have Claret Hills.
Claret Hills.
Because that might be a lot more cars, and I doubt the state included that.
And I think even, even taking 25% off, coming up with the $320,000, I think it's still high. It's still high.
There's a lot of people just aren't going to buy it.
Well, there's a lot of them, just flat out aren't going to buy them.
Right.
Period.
See, I love, I love the free, the dollar one now, because there are places that you go to, I think, big one is Chicago, where if you're there without a vehicle sticker, you're going to get a ticket, even though they can tell you're from another town. And then you have to go and prove, you know, you've got to go to court and prove that you live in another town, and that's why, I mean, my husband reads this all the time in the paper and stuff. They'll ticket you anyway, and hopefully you'll be dumb enough to pay. So we've always made sure we bought the, every time we got a new car, we made sure we got the free, you know, the dollar ticket, or whatever they were, $5, whatever they were here, because we want to make sure we had something on our windshield to prove that, you know, we lived, you know, in Westmont, so we wouldn't get ticketed.
And that goes with the part with the ordinance, meaning the vehicle is housed, if the vehicle is housed here in Westmont, it needs a sticker.
And just to sort of wrap up the vehicle sticker and move on, I think we're all in agreement, we'll just sort of put it out there with the tax. And when we get to the bottom line, we'll have to make those hard decisions.
While we're at a break, I do want to announce that Deputy Chief Brinsa is here. I didn't see him come in. I'm sorry, Ross. Applause.
I have a quick question. Spencer, on the, I think the title of the file was potential revenue sources. There's one that's listed, a street and bridge.
Yes.
Is that something we can do as a non-home rule community?
You pull that up.
Charge tolls.
Something I think we should all talk about, given we have 40 miles of roads that need to be done.
Yeah, no money to do it right now.
You talking about this?
Yeah.
Street and bridge tax?
I'm the last person for taxes, but I honestly think this is something that I know I'd personally be willing to pay for, and I'm sure a lot of.
If it's earmarked to go back into maintaining the streets.
Yeah. And I know a lot of residents that would buy into it and be very supportive of it.
Oh, I think you'd have residents that are going to say, we're not going to do that. It ought to come out of the regular budget like it normally does.
So is that something we could do, though, as a non-home rule community?
We could propose it to referendum.
Oh, they have to go to referendum?
Yes, it would have to go to referendum, but it's something we could propose. We could propose that one as referendum. We can also do a non-home rule sales tax that's, after 2020, you can only do it for infrastructure. When we do the referendum, we could word it to only be used for infrastructure if we wanted to at that point. That would, I think either of those would be valid things to put on the referendum. We could, you know, choose one of them to be able to get some additional road improvements done, if the residents are interested.
But the restaurant, the place of eatery, we don't have to put on referendum?
That's correct. It does not have to go on referendum.
So all of these.
Basically, all of these things would have to be put on a referendum. So you're looking at, what, 20, 2015?
14.
2014.
November of 2014 is the next general.
It was the next budget that it would actually be available in, after that.
Be the 2015, '16 budget.
Uh huh.
Yep.
So all of the ones that say real estate would require a referendum. Cigarette tax, we can't do because we receive sales tax from the state. And then these are the ones we already do. But all of the real estate ones require referendum to adopt a new property tax.
Okay.
And we already do cable, too, don't we?
I know that we have a franchise agreement through the cable, yeah.
With a franchise fee.
With a franchise fee with the cable, and they, they pay franchise fees, yeah. So I don't know if this ability to tax and regulate cable TV is different than the franchise or not.
No, it's, they changed that a few years ago. What's that called now? Infrastructure maintenance fee?
Yeah, if it goes to the, yeah, it's only for their infrastructure, not for the general.
Had to do with the fact that the technologies were coming together, video and cable, and...
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions with revenue?
Anybody from staff or the public have any comments or questions on revenue? Thank you.
So the next one I wanted to look through is to kind of go through the budget cuts that I had mentioned previously, that, some of which were discussed on Monday, and some of which were, you know, in the email that I sent out, kind of summarizing the cuts that were left in the budget. As you'll recall, we went through and had several cuts proposed to, so we had several revenues proposed and several cuts proposed, that was able to generate at the beginning of the process, a surplus of about $1 million. And then during the course of these workshops, we went through and removed some of the revenues, removed some of the expenses. And there's a few things that there was discussion on, but I don't believe there was actual specific decisions to remove, so I highlighted those. We can certainly talk about any of the other cuts as well, but wanted to address those. The first ones I wanted to talk about are the ones that I already mentioned. Here are the two items in red, the DEA Task Force employee expense, and then the offset with the revenue, which is where we got to our surplus, sorry, where we got to our deficit. And then the other item that was mentioned by Chief Mulhern was the fact that we'd be eliminating, taking two cars out of service, and we'd have two of their in-car cameras to be able to use as replacements, which made the initial discussion of replacing the in-car cameras not as important. And so that's also been removed as part of the current surplus deficit, the net item, so I don't know.
I thought the two cars were going to be for spare parts, then we would have them, but that doesn't alleviate the need to replace half of the in-car cameras. That's my understanding.
It makes it so that it's not, not as critical of an issue. We have some, and we were worried that some of them may be going out. We feel that if we've got the replacement parts, we'll be okay, and we can hold off on it, and perhaps purchase them in the next year. I know that's the opinion of both Brian Gruen and Glenn Liljberg, that we could hold off on it. I think, I'm sure it would be nice to get them. Nice or newer toys are always nice, but I think we could hold off on it if we need to. But if the board wants to do it, obviously, we're okay to replace them.
No offense, but in-car cameras and squads, I wouldn't classify as toy, considering that, I know.
Right. They're necessary and they're needed. And the ones we have are currently working. We were anticipating they would not be working this year, and so we budgeted some money to be able to replace them if any started, you know, to deteriorate. That hasn't happened. They've been going fine without needing repairs, but we can certainly replace them.
Again, these are all just options. We're looking and trying to do our best. It was thought that if we had to take the two cars out of service, we'll have the two extra in-car cams from those. If one of, some of our other cars' equipment breaks, we would have spare parts and use those and make it through to another year. This would just be pushing it off for one year. I would not advise pushing it off past that.
Right. But aren't you replacing them with better quality cameras, too? I mean, you're not replacing them with the same thing. They're, you know, light years above what, what I've seen our cameras are now.
Yes, it is. It's a move up in technology, which we need. However, we're also looking at our cost level as well, too. We're trying to offer up the options. It's just with something that, yes, we need the cameras. We're hoping, though, that we could push it off for one more year.
We'll come back to this one.
The other thing to keep in mind, too, it'd be much better to replace them all in one replacement cycle than half and half, because you won't have officers dealing with two different types of systems then in the vehicles. There's only one type of system to maintain. And like we said, there's nothing that is malfunctioning currently in the vehicles. So the systems are currently running, and this would just give us enough spare parts to go through another year before we get to that point.
Do ours currently have the automatic download when the squads drive into the parking lot?
They do not have the automatic download, no. But they can, we do have wireless set up to the vehicles. They can be downloaded by the officer onto a server in the station manually, right now.
We talked about that earlier today, and we're going to try and experiment with, try and test it and see. That way, it would allow for either Jeff Olson to be able to go out and send the video in through the wireless, or the officer could do it himself, or herself.
So you don't have to run back and forth with a flash drive?
No, the wireless just became recent.
This year, we put it in.
Right. So this is something that we would look into to cut down on personnel time. However, the technology is not the same as you would if we were to buy brand-new cameras where you automatically, whatever, when the officer comes into a hotspot, the data is automatically uploaded and then downloaded into a computer in the station. It's all automatic. The officer doesn't have to request or send or do anything.
Right. Well, we'll set it aside. We'll have to see, but we're extremely outdated, but you know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I guess we can kind of start from the top and go through. We can talk about any of the items, but I especially wanted to make sure we at least touched on the highlighted items. So the first option that was listed as a highlighted item is moving one board meeting every other week. There was some discussion, I think, sort of back and forth about whether or not to do that, and I don't know that there was a specific consensus reached. So I wanted to at least put it out there, see if there's any desire to change that cut that's currently listed in the budget.
I think, I think that's going to be something that maybe the three of you need to figure out what you're going to do, because, I mean, if it was up to me, and I mean, we've talked about it a long time, is going to one board meeting. But the question is, do you have it on Thursday night, or do you have it on Monday night?
Would be on Monday. That's what our, that's what the town's charter provides, is board meetings are the first and third Mondays.
But it wouldn't be the first and third anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah. You talk about the village ordinance says first and third. Yeah, we can change that. We would probably recommend going to like a Thursday. We think that would work better from a staffing standpoint. We think it would also cycle better with some of the things that we're doing in the finance department. It would allow us to cut back on some of our staffing needs there.
Well, we're doing the budget for next year, and the six of us had reached a consensus on allowing staff to consolidate wherever possible. So since three of us aren't going to be there, I'd like to hear what the trustee elects think about what they'd like to see for their, their board meetings, because they're the ones that have to live with this.
Tough question to answer, since they've never really served on the village board, at least not in recent years.
I think our mayor-elect has something to say.
But while he's coming, the one question, too, is, are we still going to have this?
I've met with staff, and my recommendation would be to go every other Thursday. You miss holidays on Monday. I think that our staff is overburdened, as it is now with, what do you have, about 40 meetings a year?
Yeah.
Versus the 26. I think they're here all these meetings, and I just think we can work better if we just go every other Thursday. And it's obvious by almost saving 20 grand a year. So that's my opinion. I know Bruce.
But while Bruce is coming, the one thing I had been concerned about is to make sure, and this means you discuss something on Monday or Thursday, and two weeks later, you have to vote on that thing, and that pushes those people off two weeks, because we've got to allow the public a chance to come in and voice their opinion. And that was the benefit of having Thursday, so the public can come.
Right, but some towns, they, they...
A lot of them, a lot of them have the meeting, they go through it, they consent agenda, and then they vote on the same night.
I don't really give a damn what the other towns do. I care about what Westmont does.
That's why we want to hear from the trustees coming in, because that's...
Well, I'm just trying to let them know why I was against it, because it does not allow proper, you know, participation from public, even though a lot of times they don't[1732.32]
allow proper, you know, participation from public, even though a lot of times they don't come.
Yeah, I would, I would support the every-other-Thursday format, and it would change the way that Westmont typically would have their meetings and seek resident input. But it's up to us to find a way that we do get the input from those folks, and that's very important to me, that we hear what they think. And, you know, maybe we'll have a little bit more participation at those meetings rather than one or two people.
I doubt it.
Because that's the format. Well, and it's, I mean, we can't, well, we'll have to see, but I certainly do support it at this time.
What do you, what do you like about the, would you rather vote that night after discussion, or two weeks later, vote on it?
You know, I would have, I would have to talk with the other trustees, but I'm certainly fine for a long meeting, but a serious meeting, and, you know, let's get the job done. It's kind of my, my philosophy. But when it's fresh in your mind, but we do have to find a way to get input, certainly.
Okay.
My suggestion would be, we come up with certain categories of things, like we have a consent agenda. I mean, there's some things that are, probably require more public input. It would give it an opportunity, and we've talked about this before, and I appreciate trustee Club and I was concerned, and I know that the historical perspective was to always allow that weekend for feedback. But what a lot of other communities do is they'll do a first and second reading, so it might even be, you know, more than two weeks on an ordinance. But there may be categories of things that just aren't that critical that you could put on the agenda, talk about, and vote that same night. I mean, that's something that I think that could be discussed and worked out.
What would you do about developers in that situation, and where you're going to have to put them off coming before us and say, okay, it's going to be two weeks, now maybe a month? You know, a lot of times we, you know, they get snuck in, we're going to do it, you know, this week, and we need to get in quick. I mean, just to be able to look at that idea.
Yeah, that, since I've been here, and I, you know, I've been here a long time, we've had boards in the past that said, absolutely not. We will never, we'd never want to see a developer come off the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mayor, former Mayor, trustee Eddington, there, ah, you may remember, I think we had some boards that you were on where there, you know, we had some people kind of rushed in, and there were some, certain board members that didn't want that at all.
Yes.
So it's been kind of a philosophical thing of each board, and I think if we know what the schedule is, you know, we had that discussion when the developer, developer comes in, and we say, okay, here's the planning and zoning meetings, here's the board meetings, and they're going to have to understand that process. So I...
Well, you know, it's, to some extent, I think it's, it definitely, I think Sue hit the nail right on the head when she said some of us were here a long time ago. When I sat on the board as a trustee is when a lot of Pasquenelli Drive and a lot of the areas around Williams and 63rd Street were first being developed. You know, we were sitting in community of the home meetings until 1:00 in the morning, listening to developers with their plans and their presentations. And you can't rush that stuff, because, you know, they want to present everything that they're talking about. There would have been no way back then to do what you're suggesting to do today. I don't know what your average community of the home meeting is today, but I think it's substantially less than midnight, for the most part. And, and that probably would work. I, my own personal opinion is that between staff and, and incoming Mayor Gunther, I think they can definitely work on agendas. Worst-case scenario, if two or three things came in that had to be discussed or need to be worked on, then you have to consider going to a special meeting. But my own personal opinion is 20 grand is 20 grand. Hey, give it a shot, and we'll see what happens. You can always carry things forward. You can always call a special meeting if there's something to be done. And, and I like what, what Ron Searle said about the, about the consent agenda. I mean, the consent agenda is something that, that, that was put in several years ago, and, and it works, because it takes some of the discussion out of items that just get handled. And, and so you have saved some time there. And, and right now, there isn't a whole bunch of developers coming in. I would like to see that change, and maybe it will, as, as this economy seems to get better. But, but for now, I think it can be done on an every-other-week basis. Take, give it a shot, see what happens. We can always talk about it again, if it has to be. And like I said, if there's a specific long-winded item, we call a special meeting, that's all. Oh, you're done? All right.
I think this past meeting, Thursday night, was a perfect example of where everything could have been voted on Thursday night.
Sure.
And even the meetings that go to 11:00 or 11:30, and we've had some that have gone after, Foresley nights, yes. Even then, you're only staying 15 minutes, you know? We, we can vote many times, but, you know, we do have the opportunity to maybe call an extra meeting. I'm thinking about like when Standard Market came in. You know, we'd have, in a case like that, we'd have maybe multiple extra meetings. With the stormwater and the flooding, we had special meetings. So there's always that opportunity. The thing about going to one meeting, I think the consistency of every other week, so the public doesn't have to look at a calendar and say, oh, is it the first, or is it the third, or is it, you know, or is this, you know, the part of the quarter where there's, you know, 17 days and no meeting? You know, that, and then the Neighbor's Magazine now that's getting out, we're doing a far better job of communicating. I, you can always improve upon communication, but I think we're pretty darn good at it, when you think of all the vehicles that, that are out there. At some point, though, the residents have to take responsibility to do their homework and, you know, look at a calendar, or read the paper, or, you know, we're not going to, you know, handhold all the weight every meeting. We just can't.
Yeah, I'm all for this. I just wish we had done it earlier, but, okay, so.
Yeah. I mean, I'm okay with trying it. We, you know, we can always go back. We can always change it.
Well, the other thing to think about, too, is, it being every other week, we wouldn't have some of the gaps that we have now, where we have long months. So you'd have even more consistency in a way that we don't have now.
Pat, maybe if we had more public participation, we'd have to do it this, your way. But we just don't get it.
Just don't. People...
We can give every opportunity that there is, but, you know how many calls I've had on this issue that we're discussing right now as of the budget?
Zero.
Yeah.
Zero. Not one phone call, not one email, not one visit to the store, zero.
And it's not the first time we've discussed it.
No, no, no. And that's, you know, and that's a shame. I mean, I wish it was the point that we had five or 10 people sitting in the audience, and I wish it was the issue that we'd have to say, we have so much participation, we can't do this. That would be the better way to do it. But I just don't see that participation. And again, maybe we'll look at it again if we find out that people are getting engaged. You know, newer people are coming in and decide they want to come to the meetings and really find out what's going on, and we got, we have to do it. But the way it is right now with the budgets, as much as I don't want to do this, I don't think there's much of a choice.
We can't get people out for anything, so, except for our token few, so I...
Yeah, but it's been nice to say, you had from Thursday to Monday to call me.
Yeah. But we can also say, you know, the, but the, the agenda, the agenda has been posted at nine different places. It's, you know...
And that's, that's simple. Okay.
Right. So is the general consensus, we'll leave that cut?
I think, I'm good with it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. The next item that there was some discussion on was internal staff video recording, and I wanted to bring this up. I don't know if Glenn wants to make any comments on it. The one thing we have adjusted was, this number was like 3,000 or something due to some additional figuring. We figure we can actually save about 4,800 if we do externally do only the 48 meetings. Obviously, this now will be changed, and we'll be saving close to, probably close to 6,000, probably another 5,000 or so with the change that was just made now of cutting the board meetings in half. So we can go run those numbers again. The question then would be, for the remaining board meetings, do we want to continue to have internal staff handling it, or do we want to be outsourcing it, having internal staff handling a portion of it?
Question is, Glenn, do you have the internal staff to do it?
It's on his speaker hat.
That's why we were going to propose to just contract out 48 and handle the rest of the meetings, because I think it would have been stretching us a little too thin. With the reduction in meetings, it's hard to say right now. I mean, we're talking, we would be doing more than half the meetings with the reduction. So I would prefer, prefer to still have some money in there. I don't know what luck we will have as far as being able to, I talked with Spencer, you know, you've now cut that number for the external contractor down quite a bit to maintain training and stuff, so we may or may not have a hard time maintaining that person. So we may end up bringing it in-house anyhow. But I'd like to leave something in there, just in case we do get in a bind, or, you know, we do have stuff that comes up where we will be busy for a couple of weeks, depending on what's going on, so. But definitely, the reduction in board meetings makes a big difference when looking at this, and we weren't looking at that when we made the adjustment earlier this week.
Makes sense. Good.
So then, what is the consensus? And we want, we can come up with some additional numbers to present on Saturday. Is that the general...
Yeah, the same, we had talked about this before during IT's presentation about Glenn, about splitting up the work and not having somebody, you know, go halftime and do all the, go 20 hours and spend 20 hours doing meetings. It would be 30, 10, and all of that. So if you talk to Glenn, he'll come up with a number that'll, that'll make him happy and cheer us up, too. You okay with that, Glenn?
All right. So the next item that was, shouldn't have closed that, also in IT's budget, was the proposal elimination of the audio podcasting. And I don't know that there was significant amount of discussion with regards to that. I think Glenn has run some additional numbers since then. And...
Wireless microphone over there. We need, do we have a Mr. Microphone around? Did he, can you...
So we did look at what people are using the audio podcasting for, and it was one of these things we threw out there, because do you just keep doing it because you always did, or do you want to reevaluate what we've been doing? So, I mean, we, some of the meetings, we have one or two people that have downloaded it to listen to it. Other meetings, we were in the 30s. And so the nice thing with the fluctuation is, it shows that people are actually actively going out there and downloading the meetings instead of just automatically downloading them and never listening to them. So there is, there is some viewpoint there that there is participation in the audio podcasts, but they're also available on YouTube now, which, to me, is easy to get to and much easier to watch. So do we keep the audio or do we not? It's not a budget breaker, but it is something to reevaluate whether we want to continue doing that. I think we're one of the few towns that still does audio podcasting, or...
Is that $400 just staff time in doing it, where if you stop doing it, your staff could be doing other things, too?
It takes less than 10 minutes to prep an audio podcast, so it's, it's almost, and we do it in, while we're doing the YouTube prep. So, I mean, it probably doesn't even take 10 minutes total to do it, because there's stuff going on. So that, that total cost is just the cost to host it.
Okay.
Are they both live?
No, neither one's live.
I'm fine with just YouTube. There's no reason with both, for the same thing.
I think, get rid of it.
Except YouTube be a video. I mean...
I don't feel strongly either way, so it's more board decision.
My own personal opinion, and I don't really feel strongly, it's not a significant dollar value, really, but the nice thing about the video is it's very easy to find the spot you want to find. You know, the audio, you're kind of like going through it.
Exactly.
Video, you can, if you've got some kind of image in your head, particularly if you're at the meeting, you can kind of figure out where you're at and...
Right. And plus, the audio, you have to know who all it is and recognize the voices. I think it's an extraneous thing. I don't think we need to waste with it. It just, even if it were free, I'd get rid of it. Agreed.
Yep.
Okay. We'll leave that, cut in there, and then, okay, and then, before you go back, Glenn, the next item is, that I wanted to at least mention is the eliminate downtown music service. So that's been listed as a potential cut. I know there was some brief discussion about it at the first workshop, but I don't believe there was a specific decision to remove it, or specifically a decision to leave it in as a cut, so.
Let's say just leave it in there. I mean, we're getting four brush pickups now, so leave the music in.
Glenn, why can't we use Pandora for free? And just let them play an advertisement once, once an hour?
Because you can't rebroadcast that legally. And just like you can't play CDs. So when we first started using the downtown system, we used to play CDs, and we used to play ASCAP BMI fees, licensing fees to play the music. We only had 12 speakers, a license per speaker. So when we put in the 180 speakers through the downtown, that cost was around 14,000 or 15,000 a year to continue that licensing, which is why we moved the music. It was a lot cheaper. We could play music that is in the public domain, but you also have to find a performance that falls within that public domain as well. So, because otherwise, you have to pay royalty licensing fees to the performing artist. So this is the cheapest solution that we have as far as playing music through the downtown. We run the same problem with, you know, cruise nights, you know, they can't just play, anything that's played in a public venue has to be licensed, so.
And you can't just do it at a certain time of year. Let's say we just did Christmas music.
Nope.
It's all or nothing.
One, one, one event, you have to have licensing to play it to a group of people.
So many times, because that's in the public domain.
Actually, half of those are actually, you have to pay for, because if it's performed by a specific artist...
Not if I'm singing it.
Yeah, yeah, nope, nope. If you're performing it, you're...
Well, thank God it's not.
I think it has a certain appeal, and, and I, you know, I hate to keep bringing up poor trustee Scott and his comments, but I think they were really well-taken. I mean, we have a downtown that we want to be welcoming. We're in the midst of a tiff on the south side and hopefully in the downtown. We want it to be appealing. We want it to be Walker-friendly. We want it to be people-friendly. I think it has a certain appeal to it. I'd hate to see us get rid of it.
You would be surprised the number of people that tell me on the train platform how much they enjoy the music and how much they really, really enjoyed the Christmas decorations.
I, I've had comments, too, yeah.
Just a little note for everyone. I mean, we put in that system, and that was when Ray was here, so probably at least eight years ago, and we've spent almost not a single penny on maintenance on that system. So it's run this entire time without any maintenance at all on that system.
The speakers start falling off, the poles are rusting, we're not going to pay to replace them, but I think we leave it. We have to do something with that.
Okay, we're leaving it.
I like the music downtown.
It's nice.
I'm fine with leaving it. Okay.
That's about Task Force Employee...
12:50, that whole line comes out if we're going to leave it, right?
Which 12:50, I'm sorry?
The music.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that's a good idea. Get rid of that. That didn't work.
Quick, undo.
No.
You and Tim are...
Yeah, you took the do's adjustment.
Competing. Could be. Okay. All right, we'll leave that highlighted, come back to it. There was nothing specifically listed in the fire department, although we did find out something additional with regards to the fire department. I don't know if Craig wants to come up in case there's any additional questions. But the basic issue is, as the boards are aware, we have kind of a limited number of paid-on-call firefighters, and we've been, had some leave, we've been maintaining the same number of shifts, and the fire department would like to be able to hire additional individuals to fill the same number of shifts. It wouldn't be an increase in the number of shifts or an increase in the budget for any salaries. However, there are some additional initial costs, such as some physicals, some training, some equipment, some of those sort of things. And the total cost for those to be able to hire some additional paid-on-call firefighters is an additional $12,000, which we'd be needing to add into the budget, I believe. Is that accurate, Craig?
That's one number, the $12,000. Excuse me. If we wanted to hire 10, 10 personnel, we're looking at physicals, training for all these gentlemen, turnout gear, ride-along, and instructors' pay, for a total of $46,000. But we have a grant coming along for the new gear. The gear's the expensive thing, but we have gear upstairs that we feel we can use, and with the grant, we might be able to use some of that money for that. Overall, the money we were looking for, 12,000 is a close number. Talked with the chief this afternoon, it'd be $14,000 to hire 10 personnel. That's less, that's less the physicals. Last time we hired personnel, the districts helped pay for the physicals, which we would go, go to them for that. This cost that we're looking at, $14,000, is the training cost, a minimal amount of uniforms, instructors' pay, and ride-along, just to put them on the job.
I'd say it's money well spent.
Yep.
I have no problem with that at all.
Spend a few bucks now, or spend a lot more later.
Pay me now or pay me later.
All questions?
No, thank you.
All right. I think that's it on the ones that I wanted to make sure that I understood the direction from the board. Any additional questions or comments on any of the items that are currently cut from the budget? the budget?
Yeah, for the public, anybody have any comments, board comments?
Final budget or is this a preliminary budget?
This is the draft budget. We're at about the halfway point. We have two more, one more meeting scheduled after tonight.
Is the public invited to that meeting?
Absolutely. Every meeting that we publish...
They're all open. These are all open, all the budget workshops too.
I asked my wife to go to the first two that he pays his average.
Well, thank you for coming.
Catching up to what's going on. So this is the draft, okay.
Yeah, it's a work in progress through the workshops so that we can kind of...
Right, what'll happen is we'll do a final budget, draft budget presentation before the board adopts it. So that'll be in addition to the work, the remaining workshop we have unless the board decides to call for any other special workshops.
I mean, one other comment, it's, it's just so much for somebody sitting in a meeting like this.
It is.
I have a specialty in this area, even though I've looked at budgets all my, all my working life, and it's just a lot to catch up to. So I don't, I don't know how you make it easier for the public to understand it.
Well, if you come from the private sector too, it's a very different type of financial phenomenon. Governmental fund accounting is different in concept. So it's hard sometimes for people to understand that, you know, you can't always spend money for one fund in another fund. It's just not legally, you know, appropriate.
We thank you for at least trying to follow along with this because we get a lot of complaints about how we spend the money, but they don't want to, they don't want to listen to how, how it is that it, you know, works.
My father always taught me, put yourself in the other person's shoes. That's kind of judgment. I've always tried to do that.
Just one more thing on this I just kind of want to throw out. I know that, I know the brush pickup is a hot topic in this town. But is there really any reason why we couldn't do it just twice a year, spring and fall?
Because that would require everybody to do all of their pruning and accumulation for one, the big event, and if somebody does it early, all that brush is going to sit there and it's going to kill everything that's under it and all that. I think that, you know, we're, we're asking people to do all of their yard work in preparation for one brush pickup.
That might encourage a little burning too.
Okay. And quite honestly, there have been people in this town that missed the brush pickup, so they dragged their brush to their neighbors. I mean, we saw that over on Lincoln and said, wasn't me, even though the tracks, you know. But I think, I think it would just encourage them to dump it at Ty Warner or, you know, my front lawn where they put the Christmas trees this year.
Your front lawn? How about three? One in the middle, one in the beginning, one in the end?
It just seems like a lot of, I mean, it's a lot of money and it's for a small number of people. When you look at the population of our town, half of it being multifamily.
This is where I get to say as a homeowner in this town, it is a benefit to be four times because even depending on the weather and depending on how it goes, rain, whatever, you have to prune certain vegetation at certain times or you have to do it in a particular way. I mean, a lot of my stuff I bag, but when I get into some of the, some of the shrubs and the bushes and that, I have to, I have to cut it that way. I can't get them in a bag. I don't think that four times is a whole lot, I think, because you're, you're looking at spring and fall and that's it. Because to try to get it done in three, I think it's going to consume a lot of time, but I think if you did it in four on a regular basis, I think you'll still be fine. Plus, no matter what you do at this point, they're not going to be happy. So, I mean...
Why don't we try three?
Well, and I'm just... Put you in high summer and there's, if you don't prune anything except for the spring and fall.
And I'm just playing devil's advocate here because, I mean, I live in a town home subdivision, so it doesn't really impact me, so maybe I look for, you know, a different way. And I did put my Christmas tree on your, just kidding.
I figured.
Just kidding, we're neighbors. Just kidding, just kidding.
Video tape.
It's not like you can only have brush pickup four times or twice. That's how many brush pickups you can have at no cost. You can always have brush pickup, you buy the tag. I mean, we're, this is a tough budget and I'd rather reduce brush pickup than, you know, not tell the police chief, you know, he can't have cameras in his car or the fire department can't have turnout gear, whatever it might be. I don't know.
Well, I live in town.
You can always have brush pickup, you just pay for it. And I know people don't like that, but these are tough times.
I live here and I use it only twice a year, so...
I use it twice.
I'd be good, it'd be good for me.
This, you know, this is another...
If I use it twice. Sometimes I don't use it at all.
This is another topic that I'd like to hear from the new board members because I'm sure they have a take on it and with all, you know, you're going to live with whatever we decide, so...
I'm more like my answer.
I had a whole nother theory on it is I thought, and I've talked to staff a little bit, I always thought we should have some sort of a rotating crew on Saturday and Sunday during the peak months where we have a crew work, two guys or two guys work Tuesday through Saturday and then Sunday through Thursday. And on the weekends, part of their normal workload would be that the residents can bring the brush to them on the first Saturday. Everybody knows somebody with a pickup truck. You might have another location at a Ty Warner where the brush gets brought to you and have our staff, not overtime, but that's part of their normal work day, work is Saturday and Sunday. Change garbage cans downtown, they put out barricades if there's block parties. So there's a lot of things I think they can do and you rotate that a month on and then another crew comes on. So I just, that's one thought I had, not only for the brush pickup, but just a little bit more coverage for our community on the weekends, so.
I'd hate to disagree with them, but...
He's going to start tonight.
You might as well start now because it's eventually going to happen.
I'm very familiar with that program and I do not like it because you have to take that stuff and throw it in your, if it's your car. You know, my mother is very familiar with it. She puts it in the backseat, then she's got to clean her car and all those things. So it is, you know, and it might save, it might save some hassle. I certainly think we need a brush pickup. Some people know that my wife is a very avid gardener. We have more plants than Home Depot.
That's true.
And we do a lot of gardening and it's, I just, you know, stack it off to the side and have it picked up two times a year. And it works perfectly fine that way. You got to plan for it, you got to let them know and, you know, hopefully you don't miss the day. But then I say, you know, if you miss the day, then you have to pay.
And plus, you know, two, two works, that's, that's a freebie and then beyond that, buy the sticker.
Two freebies.
And I do all, I do all those things. I, I take the freebies and then I pay, I do whatever I have to do, but...
Do you put it in my front yard too?
I do not do that. I do not dump it in the parks.
But now that you're, now you're, now you're offering down in Carlton Courts, so I think I'll just, it's not that far, I can...
We all bring up Dallas.
What would two save?
No, it's just Christmas trees.
I don't know, I'd have to talk with Steve Meany, we'd have to run some numbers, look at staffing levels and see what two would end up saving. I'm not sure what that dollar amount would be. I don't know if you know, but...
I can't say I can tell you quickly specifically right now, but one aspect built into those costs for brush pickup now is the, the advantage of using seasonal employees. If you go to a two pickup system, you would want to do it early in the spring and late in the fall, and that's when the seasonals aren't there because they're, you know, our seasonal program is caters to students. So it would, it would eliminate that need and it changes it. So now the cost of the brush pickup is, the built-in costs are full-time labor as opposed to seasonal. So that would have to be looked at closely, but I don't know if the savings from four to two...
Would be significant.
Well, it won't be half. It'll, you know, it'll, or double, I guess I should say. It would be something in between.
Okay. It'll be something.
Something, somewhere in there.
Okay.
I guess I'm in agreement with, with what the others are saying, you know, I think we need to do something. When I was out walking the streets, I guess the two themes that I kept hearing was fix my street and why are you taking away my brush pickup? And so I think there's alternatives. I like this twice-a-year idea. On the other side of the street, it gets down to where are you going to spend the next nickel? And, you know, are you going to hurt the employees who work so darn hard for this village or are you going to take away the brush pickup? And it's a tough decision to make. And you guys are trying to do a heck of a job here with this budget, and I know it's a tough budget. So, you know, I commend what you're doing, but I think that, that's the bottom line. Would I like to see it stay? Absolutely, so would you. There's no question. But where do you spend the money? And sometimes that's where you have to just say, that's it. You know, if, if things improve down the road, if, if all of a sudden, you know, a bunch of Mercedes get sold that we didn't think we were going to sell, we can always put it back if there's excess funds or part of it back. But, you know, I, I, I think I have to, to say for now, would I like to see it? Yes. But, you know, if it gets down to keeping it or working on salaries or something else, I'd say it's got to go. I don't think there's any other way of doing it.
Brush pickup's a luxury?
Yes.
Yes. Somebody losing their job is a disaster.
Yeah, amen.
That pretty well sums it up.
I got to rebut Bruce's.
I got to rebut Bruce now. Tell him then, then I'm going to close this. But the, I'm all for brush pickup twice a year. That's all I do at home. I make sure I trim it early and I trim it in the fall. So I'm not opposed to it. My suggestion was if it is eliminated completely, this is an option that we can provide the residents.
Bring it to, bring it to the...
Like the giant shredding event.
Now we understand you, yes. Okay.
Okay, so we can get some additional information on two? Is that the...
Yeah, at least look at it.
For Saturday? Okay. Okay, so currently, without that change to two, we're looking at a net surplus or deficit, in this case it's a deficit, net deficit of about 633,000 currently. So any other comments or questions on, oh, that's the sheet, this sheet that we were on? Okay. All right.
Scroll down just one more time because you kind of blew by public works. I want to make sure that it's, because we went through everything else and...
Yeah. Yep. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, so this is where we're currently, we want to just sort of go through in order again, and if we look at each department one more time. To the board unless there's any other...
Well, you know, I keep sitting here thinking, when's the time to institute the eatery tax? I mean, I've been thinking about that since the whole subject came up and, you know, we didn't hear screams about the, we heard some about the gas tax, but, you know, and certainly the general sales tax when we had that quarter over percent increase, everybody understood what it was for. You know, and now it's like, you know, every time I'm driving through town and all that, I'm, I'm thinking, okay, you know, somebody that's just buying their morning coffee at McDonald's, three cents, it's, you know, it's not even three cents. That, and I am in favor of the 1% because, you know, it's a dollar on 100 and there's not, not a lot of people spending, going out for $100 meals. And even then, the 1% is just so miniscule. And it would really help us a lot in looking at the budget, at where we're looking to cut salaries and hours and all that, I really want to put that on, a lot of that's going to be borne by people who don't even live in this town.
What was the projected revenue of 1%?
551 or something? 515? 551 or 515? Just over a half a million dollars.
Yeah.
510.
10?
Yeah. I mean, the way I look at it, when we were home rule, we had no problem instituting those taxes.
We have a question from our mayor-elect.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Is that a published backdoor referendum? Do you have public notice on that? What would we have to do to implement it?
It just has to be on an agenda.
Yeah.
It doesn't need any posting for a 30-day notice or anything?
Could, could it be a referendum?
Yeah, could someone object to it and make it go to the voters? Yeah.
I do not know the answer. Do you know, Spencer?
I do not know. We can check with our attorney.
I was just curious if it required a 30-day notice where someone could come in and...
I don't even think people will notice it. I mean, most towns charge...
No, I think it's...
The legal requirement, whether it requires...
Before it passes, before it becomes official. Is it just board action that doesn't require?
I don't know, but I don't think they can, I don't, I know it doesn't require a referendum and I don't think it allows for a, you know, to, for people to make it a referendum item, but that's, that's just not one of those. So I think that it's similar to the other taxes that we had, yeah.
Good, thank you.
But we'll check, obviously.
Yes.
What's thinking?
I do have a question.
Could you come to the podium, please? Thank you. And if you could just for the record, state your name. Thank you.
Ed Shell, I've been a resident of Westmont for 25 years with my family and I'm familiar with all the towns. My sister lives in Donnersboro, my mother in Clerton Hills. I went to Hinsdale Central High School, so I'm familiar with that area. 1%, just a question though, I'm pretty familiar with restaurants. That was something I did for a living, worked on their insurance program, not just restaurants, big companies do, but if you put a tax on the food, do people stop drinking? Because drinking and alcohol is where most restaurants make their, that's where they make their money. They don't make it on food all that much. So I'm just thinking, if you've thought this through, that maybe 1% isn't all that great, it would make, it probably would not make that much of a difference, but I'm just thinking, I, I think outwardly. And if people stop drinking because they're trying to save some money because now their food costs have gone up or their taxes have gone up on the food, do they stop drinking as many beers or martinis or whatever? That's, I'm just, I don't know, it's probably a moot point.
It's a lot more to get somebody to stop drinking than a...
Benny. 1%. Spencer, could you...
I don't know, you should, you should see how I am. I mean, I retired at age 53. I, I have a running cycle in my mind of what everything costs all the time.
I, I think if Spencer could maybe put up the slide or the, or the page that indicates which towns around us already have that tax and then we consider how busy their restaurants are, I would say probably the answer is no. But Bowling Brook, am I on the right?
I mean, Aurora's 1.75.
Yeah.
Naperville's at 1% and Naperville, you can't even get into the restaurants in Naperville.
I mean, look at all the restaurants around Yorktown Mall that, you know, are very difficult to get into at any given time.
Yep.
These are their taxes?
Yes, the percentage, the, the dollar's the vehicle sticker, the eating, the eatery tax is the percentage column. Because it just made it one slide when we were comparing different numbers.
Again.
3%.
That's why I don't like to say that much because if you don't put yourself in the other person's shoes, you don't, and I didn't know that. I mean, I just think of how restaurants, I know they make their money on liquor, that's where they want, that's where they make their money.
And I think that's a really good question because many of our restaurants may have that same question when we put this in place. So I think it is something that you have to think about.
And Westmont, I haven't seen West Suburban Living change, but of all of the DuPage County suburbs, Westmont has the most eateries. But...
But comparatively speaking, they don't, a lot, most of them don't serve alcohol. They're fast food, they're, you know, mom and pop, they're the little, you know, we have, you know, Margies and Golden Basket and all that kind of thing. And, you know, the...
They wouldn't be affected by this. I mean, they don't serve alcohol, so they wouldn't be...
Right. So it's just, you know, their tax is going to be, you know, and plus, when you look at the overall food bill, it's going to be miniscule at most of these places. It's just going to be in volume. It's not going to be in amount per person. It's going to be in volume.
I'd much rather see, do it this way than vehicle stickers. If you're going to do it, then...
Because you're only hitting one group, ours.
Yes.
But where would this, it'll be people that come...
This is spread out. Visitors to the community.
I mean, Ogden Avenue is, you know, I'd be surprised if you even got 20% Westmont residents in any given Ogden Avenue eatery.
Well, think alone, just our workday population is significantly higher than our regular population when you look at all of our office parks. And those are the people that are coming from other communities and go out for lunch.
Right.
So they, in essence, would help fund that brush pickup.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I'm in favor because, you know, when, with the home rule and the increase of the sales tax and the gas tax, knowing that it was going to be spread out, you know, nobody said, well, what about, you know, how's somebody going to get to work if they're paying a quarter of a cent more on gas? It was a spread it, spread it out then. That also was on volume. And look at the amount it was at a quarter of a percent, you know. Likewise, the sales tax. And the sales tax hit all these eateries too. So, you know, and nobody backed off going to the restaurants because of it.
Right.
So...
Matter of fact, your good restaurants are even busier now than they have been in many years.
Many years. Yes. Yes. Okay. Any other questions on that or points? I guess we can move on.
Is that the general consensus then? Put it in at the...
1%.
1%.
How does the board feel?
I'm okay with it.
Lee, everybody's okay?
I mean, I mean, you know, I could sit here and say, I'm involved in a business situation where it will, it'll affect, but I mean, at 1%, I mean, I don't, I don't see whether it's a earth-shaking scenario.
It's a level playing field for everybody.
Right, right. But, but let's talk about that just for a minute, because how will it affect the restaurant in addition to maybe somebody will say, I'm not going to eat there because now it's 1% more and I'm going to go to some other town that doesn't have it, which probably is a long shot. What do they have to do in terms of reporting and programming their registers and training staff? I mean, is that a big issue? Doesn't seem...
Heckly done on a register anyhow. It should be automatically done.
So, so it's not a big issue?
Yeah, they're POS system. They would just update the tax.
Should be pretty easy.
Unless, unless somebody's doing it by hand.
So they, they will be reporting and giving the money to the village as opposed to the state. So currently with the sales tax, they do it to the state. And then in this situation, they'd be giving it directly to the village. So they'd be filling out the village return each month and sending it in along with a copy of their state return detailing that. So there would be the extra step of an additional return.
But I'll tell you something, if I owned a restaurant in Westmont and I had to do that, do you know what that tells me about my marketing efforts? Who in Westmont's eating there and, you know, all kinds of stuff? So I would be, you know, there's not always a bad side to everything.
Right. I agree.
I also look at the fact that when I've gone to other towns to eat, that's the last thing I'm thinking of is, what, what am I paying their sales tax? Am I going to save a buck if I go eat in the town next door? You know?
If Pat's not paying attention to it, I think we're safe. That would be LD, as we call her.
That's the last thing on my mind. Unless you go, no, if you're adding turn items, you're ruining it.
But I mean, you, you...
In my opinion, my wife would be laughing right now.
Yeah.
See, when Illinois raised all the taxes for the tolls on the streets, we don't go a lot of places because I don't like to pay an extra 65 cents. Well, to me, 65, but it changes my thinking of things. And like I said, I have a very good cycle in my mind of what, how things are. When I went out to see my friend in Wayne, Illinois, I'm like, geez, it cost me like two bucks just to, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's how a lot of people think these days. You might think the economy's getting better, but there's a great percentage of people that in their mind...
Well, that was a crazy doubling too.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm saying it as a tax thing because like, I'll go and, and when I drive by, I'll look at a gas station and I'll see what their tax is, you know, their, their amount. Then I'll go further down the road to see what their amount is and stuff. And I'll come back if, if this one was cheaper, even if it's five cents cheaper a gallon, it doesn't matter, you know, if it's cheaper, I'll go back to the guy.
Much did you spend in gas?
But it doesn't strike me as tax.
Okay, this is, this is a lot of fun, but I think for the sake of moving the evening on...
Yeah, but it's not the word tax that is bothering me. It's just the final...
We have another comment?
Yeah, Ed was saying something.
I'm just, my wife goes to Costco for a guest. I'm just saying, these people, and I'm not saying what you're doing is wrong or how the vote, people voted for the loss of the home rule and they're really watching expenses. And now you've got a person sitting here, which I'm telling you, and I have the wherewithal to pay for it, but I'm watching where I travel because it costs me an extra 35 cents every time I go to Schaumburg or an extra buck and a half. I'm watching when they bring their price of Heineken up from 3.75 to $5. I don't drink a Heineken anymore. So think about that when you start to do your budgets. There are people like me, my wife would be laughing.
Well, no, I think, I think...
But there are people like me who just say, I'm not, I'm going to water at a restaurant now. I'm, we're not going to travel up to Schaumburg to have dinner. We're going to stay in Westmont.
I know I'm not going to Hanover Park at 3%.
I'm sorry.
Now that we know.
Now that we know. But no, I think you raise excellent points. And this is just one more example of why we wish the public would engage in some of the things the village does. So thank you.
Because I have my best thing I can, bro.
No, that's all right, but I still say...
I'm proud of the fact that I'm giving you my opinion.
And we appreciate them.
It's very important.
Costs going up.
Does your wife work?
No.
Okay. Let's just say you weren't retired. Would you rather lose your job or pay 1% more in tax at McDonald's?
Um, you know, I don't mind paying the 1%. I'm just telling you exactly how some people...
I know, no, and I appreciate it, but I'm just saying that, and we're listening to you. We are. We're just, I, you know, I just...
You've got to pass the budget that you have to pass.
Right.
I understand the compromise and everything.
Right. Because in addition to taxing people, we have a payroll that we don't want it to go down to zero because we need people to do their job.
I know that. But I don't want to see people lose their jobs out of this.
But what I'm just trying to say for taxes too, though, is that, you know, like, I'm a Sam's person. So I'll go out to Sam's in Woodridge. But I have the option of going to, you know, Hodgkin's. I've been there. But am I, am I looking at what they're charging? I can't even begin to tell you who's charging more sales tax. Because it wasn't the sales tax I was looking at. It was the cost of the item or how much it costs me to get to that place. So the 1%, that's what I thought for a while. With the 1%, if I knew I was saving 1% in Hodgkin's, would I drive all the way to Hodgkin's? I doubt it, you know, for the 1%. So, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I'm thinking about that.
I think people are going to look at it a number of different ways and, but clearly, I don't think this board has a choice right now.
Right.
Given the numbers we're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, Spencer, thank you.
Was that the general consensus then?
I think we're going to put it back in unless those lottery tickets pay off this weekend. Hey, look at me. How much you think I'm paying taxes on that 50% tax?
That brings our deficit to about negative 123,864.
Vehicle stickers is out of that, right?
That's correct. Vehicle stickers not listed.
But we still have the four pickups right now until we get a price.
That's correct.
Right. So we're estimating...
I'd say that was a good compromise.
I think so.
Very good.
I think so.
We didn't put it on the, on the residents?
Right.
Spread the cost out for people who come here. So I think the residents won on that one.
Definitely.
All right. Should we go through departments one more time or do we, any other specific questions or comments before going through one more time? Or do we want to?
Well, we've got to come up with 123,000.
Let's do it quick.
Yeah, let's, let's go through them. It might generate questions or thoughts that we missed or didn't think of.
And we have a new person in the audience who might come up with some ideas.
Pressure's on. Pressure's on now.
My name is Greg Zepplin. It's not his...
Yeah. Can you get a close-up of him, Glenn?
Can you get a close-up? And put his name in writing under the picture?
We're glad you came.
Yes, we are very glad.
That's why we're kidding you. If we were kidding you, it would be a different story.
We're trying to relax you so you get a little more...
We're just so happy somebody's interested.
At least someone, you know, geez.
So moving on to number three that was listed there of police. We've got, we're carrying through a couple of these small items. We're conservatively holding off on the DEA. Right now, we're not looking at eliminating Dumag currently. We have some of the administrative costs of some reductions in conferences and training built in here. We currently have a part-time property control officer and then shifting records hours to, from seven to eight, moving them to nine to five. We have under facilities, we're currently carrying forward some reductions in cleanings and building maintenance. We have currently elected to not reduce the number of rounds officers shoot at each of their training shoots. And we have also decided to not eliminate the purchasing of duty ammunition.
Now, when we decide to keep something in, when you do your final presentation, are you going to take that out of there so we don't have to keep seeing, okay, we decide to keep this, we decide to keep this, when you do your final presentation?
I can do it either way you'd like. But yeah, my, I thought would be, I would just sort of list the items that were removed as the cuts.
Okay.
But if you would like to see all of them, we can.
No, I don't want to because it just keeps, we, right away, we keep thinking, did we do the right thing? And we, we can only do that so many times.
Okay. So we've got here, looking for some additional funding for participation in events, either from, predominantly from convention tourism fund, we're hoping, from hotel motel taxes. We've got some reductions, the 10,000 is just a, kind of washes itself out. It's one-time cost from last year. So we have proposed currently reduction of the use of the data package and the reduction of the Sprint phone availability. Right now, based on our discussion to hold off on the question of the in-car cameras, I've put it back in. So the additional 51,000 is part of, is already considered into that deficit currently. So we are planning to replace those.
Actually, I'd like to take it out because I agree with the chief and all that, that go one more year and do it all at once.
So that they're consistent.
They're consistent.
Good.
Yeah.
It'll make Glenn happy too.
Yeah. I knew there was another person that I agreed with. It was Glenn.
Just keep in mind Glenn also, Dr., he's going to take over the maintenance of the capable too, so, or maybe more work.
Okay.
Yeah, but I still think we take out the half replacement because it's just like everything else, technology, you know, if there's another twist, we've got two different versions. So...
You're better doing them all at the same.
Doing them all at once.
Okay. So this will take probably about a minute or 90 seconds to update. But initially, we'll be looking at a deficit of about 72,000 once that does update. All right. So this option was the idea, I mean, the major issues were the possibilities of reducing minimum staffing. We have decided to maintain minimum staffing. In both of those columns, it's the same issue. We've decided not to pass on any crossing guard cost to the schools, not to make any change of the crossing guard program.
Right.
We have listed here the reduction of the red speeds we've talked about previously. We've got video gaming added in as well as the adjustment to the actual vehicle stickers are not added in, nor are the DEA task force. Any other questions on police?
I'd like to see vehicle stickers come out now. I, I don't...
Don't even want to look at it?
I don't even want to look at vehicle stickers.
I agree.
I don't think there's a way we can get our arms around a number that's going to be even close. There's just too many variables.
Well, I mean, that's even like you're talking about your deficit of 72,000 right now as you're looking at it. I mean, numbers are numbers. And depending on how different things come in, even if you, even if you get that down to zero, you get 100, 150,000 surplus or 200,000 surplus, that's still not...
Right. It's not going to...
It's not going to, it's not going to cover what you're going to need to do.
Right. Not even close. That's why we're keeping a sharp eye out on 61st Street for the, the truck idling ordinance at $750 a day.
Okay. So I've removed that again. It's removed on the revenue sheet. It'll take about 90 seconds to update and remove here. But, oh, there it is.
Okay.
It's gone.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments with regards to the police budget?
No.
Okay. Number four, community development. Shannon is not here. She is out of the office currently, but we can, if there's any additional questions, we can certainly contact her and get answers for you by Saturday.
Did we add in for code enforcement to go from 2.5s?
Yes.
Which equals 1.0 to a total of 2.0?
Did you want to go, so, right now you're saying we're at 2.5?
No, right now we're at 0.5 plus 0.5.
0.5 plus 0.5. And you want to go to 2.0. So the additional of one full-time equivalent, yes.
Okay.
That is built into this cost. That is already part of the deficit.
Okay, go ahead. Yahoo.
Okay. Just quickly go through these. So there's the postponement of document scanning and we've adopted some of these minor miscellaneous cuts. Go ahead.
Spencer, can I interrupt you for a second? Back at the start of all this, you were going to talk to John and find out where, if anywhere, we could use the hotel motel tax. Did any of it come where, I know it can't dump into general fund, but could any of it go into certain departments which would offset some of the funds that are currently being budgeted out of general fund? Because there's a chunk of money there that we haven't accounted for a dollar to, like I say, offset general fund.
So we are in the process, we have created a matrix where we are listing several different options and are, and John is taking a look at them to see how, I guess, how likely it is that we'd be okay to make those transfers, to have the Convention Tourism Fund replace money in the different departments. You've noticed several items in each of the, you know, Public Works, Fire and Police, of we're hoping to find some money from Convention Tourism to cover some staffing costs. But there are some additional costs under the, currently under the legislation department that we historically did have under Convention Tourism, which would be an additional reduction if we can continue to fund those under Convention Tourism.
He has concluded his legal research. So, we're in the process of providing a list of those kinds of things. We don't have a final decision from him, yea or nay, this is a good idea, bad idea, this is kind of middle of the road. Some of it's not absolute.
I was thinking especially community development, the, going to the AAPA and the Council on Shopping Centers, that certainly is to attract people in...
Material?
Sure.
Yeah.
Material, all that.
Those are things that we have on our list that he's, we're waiting to kind of get a final opinion from him on.
Because that might at least, if nothing else, take care of our deficit and give us a balanced budget. And then anything else is a little bit of, little bit of gravy, which doesn't go very far.
That won't even fix the road.
No.
On that same...
Thank you, Sergeant.
Subject there is, so, just a couple of the costs in the legislation, and this is mostly just for internal staff use, but I did want to, it's got the information from the prior's budget. So... Just put it up here. So, previously, both of these dollar amounts, the Chamber External Funding and the Public Information Coordinator stipend totaling about, almost $85,000, had been part of Convention Tourism. So, those are, would be an additional savings if we can move that to Convention Tourism. Assuming that we can continue to do that, then that would be another $85,000, which would then bring, which would then cover our projected deficit.
The Public Information Coordinator doesn't do the calendar anymore, and we do the...
Neighbors.
Neighbors Magazine and all that. Do we need it as high as it is?
No, it has, it has actually been reduced, or should be reduced, in there. He's writing content, press release and content for the Neighbors publication.
I think he's spending most of his time running the WSCC, isn't he? And that shouldn't come out of the village.
Well, we don't pay for any of that.
Okay.
He gets a, the way his contract is structured, he gets a monthly stipend for the public information, things that he does.
Right. That's $1,800. And isn't it $1,800 a month? And then it's, there's a couple of extra, or $1,800 every...
It's not a month.
Yeah, it's not a month. Every papered.
Papered, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, every board meeting, twice a month, I believe.
I mean, that's...
I think the short answer is it can be reduced.
Yeah, that $43.2 is what some of our employees make, and for full-time. I think that's, I think that needs to be cut.
What does that $43.2 represent?
Larry McIntyre.
And what is that, I know what duties, though. What exactly is that for?
It's for public information. In the contract that we have, which I have shared with the board previously, it has to do, previously had to do with the newsletter production, the calendar production. We talked about that, that this year, that would be reduced because we are moving to the Neighbors publication, which we're into our second issue on that now.
That's good.
So, that's something we'd already previously talked about being reduced. And I don't know, we haven't really talked about it in the next year's budget, but it should be.
Well, the, the amounts for the additional work is reduced because we've been moved to the Neighbors publication. Those amounts are, I mean, the total of those amounts are listed, find it, here is a $3,400. So, a portion of that is, I mean, the majority of that is reduction in the amount that we're paying to him. But the $43.2 is his general stipend, which is, as far as I know, not being reduced.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Correct.
There, yeah, if you look at his, if you look at his contract, this is the part that I'd forgotten, there are specific amounts in there for each issue of the newsletter and for each calendar. And in addition to that, a number of years ago, the board approved a contract where he got a per payroll stipend for just general public relation, public information duties and responsibilities.
So, the, this portion for the production of the...
So, we have reduced the cost as it relates to Neighbors and all of that, those expenditures, is what you're telling me.
$3,400.
Stipend remains the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the stipend's still the same.
That's a good way to describe it, yeah.
That, to me, sounds like an awful lot for what we're getting now.
Well, we can revisit that and come back probably as soon as Saturday with some more information.
Okay. Can you go back to the hotel motel chart?
This, is this the one you were talking about?
Um...
Let me, let me go into the hotel motel fund itself where we've got...
Because that was around, what, $350?
Westmont Center's in there. Forgot all about that.
Put parentheses around.
That's kind of a wash because we collect the rents to cover our costs.
Yeah, but it's not that, it's not that much of a wash based on the problems that building's got.
Costs us money.
That building costs us money.
Well, we have certain capital items that we're going to need to have replaced in the future that, though, the rent, if you, we call it that, it's, it's really our cost for utilities and servicing the building. It doesn't include, setting money aside for future infrastructure upgrades that need to be done on a building over time.
Can we use the Convention Tourism Fund for new signage for the village? For example, I was driving through Bowling Brook today on Bowton Road, and right before you get the promenade, this beautiful LED sign, it's in full colors, and it's advertisement, it's a permanent nicely landscaped thing. Is that something we could do?
We think so. We have that on our list of things that the attorney's looking at right now, promotional items.
Upgrade the fire departments from the old school, put the letters in.
Yeah, with those black, black and clear letters.
Yeah. Be nice to have a...
Where you had to fill out an application if you wanted it to say something.
Yeah. You know, they could have two, and one on each side of town, they're wirelessly connected, and I mean, that would be a great way to send you...
Well, the WSCC wants to put something in, in the downtown area, but we could certainly use something new at the...
Fire departments.
Fire departments.
It's old school.
Yeah, those, again, those are things that we are, we have on our list of things that the attorney's looking at.
Cool. Nice.
Any other suggestions that people have? If you think of anything, shoot me an email. But we've been putting a list together, and he's been taking a look at that.
Yeah, and I'd just like to see the list of where John thinks we can use hotel motel tax funds on things that are currently budgeted out of the general fund.
That's what we're working...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the total amount that, as you recall, last year, we, in order to pay back some loan that was recorded by the auditors to, a few years ago, we began saying legislation would cover the costs of some of these items, and then Convention Tourism would reimburse the general fund, and then the general fund would use that money that was reimbursed to pay back the loan from Convention Tourism. And the total amount that last year, we had, we had Convention Tourism reimburse the general fund for was $106,000. So, just so that you are aware of that number.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, continuing on, we did have some additional, looking at just reduction of some training from a part-time staff member that will probably need to go away as we're going to be increasing our staff. So, I would think we'd probably not want to choose that option anymore if we're increasing our staff. What's that?
I believe Shannon said there would be some training for an increase in code enforcement, but there's, without the multifamily licensing and all of that, there's a lot less training.
Yes.
So, it's, the number's somewhere in between.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And the next item, all of these options have been chosen, so there's been the reductions, and then there's been the addition of some additional money in the budget to attend some APA conferences. We've got the reduction of one-time costs. We did not make a potential reduction of charging for hard copies of the comprehensive plan. We also did not make a reduction of eliminating all the professional memberships for our employee who works in the engineering aspect of community development. We did look at potentially postponing the downtown grant signage printing and just included a budget of pamphlets as part of the office supplies. And I know we had a discussion about the ICSE events, and I, yes, that's right, we are not reducing that one.
Nope.
We are having all of the events and in addition, adding in the Illinois Tiffan as well.
Right.
On this one, we did implement all of these changes, including reallocation, including the reduction of a part-time employee who resigned, and then we've got adjusting of budget to actual. And then we also have the increase, as was already mentioned before, of the seasonal employee. Sorry, the seasonal employees as well as the additional full-time employee.
Yep.
Both of those are included in there. And then this is simply the elimination of the rental licensing program, which is eliminated. There's the revenue eliminated from it as well.
Yeah, it's all reallocated.
Yeah, it's all reallocated. Any questions, community development? Okay. We've gone through IT. Do we want to go through it again?
No.
No.
Clerks.
You're getting your chair, Carrie.
Right. So, we have currently not put forward the chair, we're planning to replace the office chair, as well as allow him to continue to attend the trainings for certification. Got the $150 increase. And then we're not looking at eliminating past due mail reminders.
Correct.
We are look...
I think you can take the $700 postponed chair out.
Or just not even...
It just keeps, you know, it's making Carrie nervous.
That folding chair was not comfortable.
Really.
His collar came back to his face.
It's gone.
It's gone. Okay. Yeah, there was one applause in the audience.
His chair's horrible. It's gone.
So, currently, we still have the slight increase in the dog license fee to generate the extra $291. And we have the increase in the taxi cab licenses.
Is it, for 200 bucks, do we need a dog license program? And the paperwork and the forms?
Like Carrie addressed that time.
Yes. Of course, if you have pockets in your new chair, you can keep that stuff in there.
Okay. My, the short answer is probably not worth it. What a lot of people come in, we, I know we have more than 200 dogs in this town, and that's about how many licenses we sell on an annual basis. And the people that come in to obtain the licenses, really for the safety of their dogs, if the pet runs away, they have a good chance of recovering the dog through the police department, because the police department also has a record of this on their file. But I often ask the person when they come to the window, you know, I thank them for, first of all, coming in and registered their dog. Many times, the dog is chipped also.
Mm-hmm.
And this shows you the kind of ownership that we have, like, where the people really care about their pets. But by and large, the program probably is not worth it, to answer your question. It's more of a nuisance than anything for the clerk's office, really, and maybe even for police as well, just to archive the files.
Because if they have a dog tag and/or a chip...
Yeah, my dogs are chipped automatically.
Mine's not chipped, so they eats chips. And a lot of people put tags on their dogs anyhow with their information on it, no matter what, name, address, return to.
The white cane and chip away.
Exactly. Yeah. Yes, trustee Scott says, you could purchase that at, say, Pets with a Plus or something like that, where you can buy that information.
Right.
But, but what's important, we also require too, as part of the registration, the rabies vaccination information too. Because having that on file, should a dog bite somebody, at least the information is readily at hand.
Yeah, but usually, they have the rabies tag, and the problem I was having is, the tag is a three-year tag, but you want us to come in annually to try to remember to get the...
Exactly.
The license and...
I think it's a nuisance, because, you know, if somebody, if you have a dog bite, you're going to require that person to give you the, the information from the vet, that they've been, you know, rabies inoculated and all that, so...
Right. Yeah, so if you eliminate the program, you're actually eliminating the cost of purchasing the metal tags.
They cost more to do it.
I say let it go. I think let it go.
Yeah, I agree.
Less stuff that you have to do.
Let it go.
Just inject it in. How many tags have we got left?
A lot of questions about the increase in the commuter parking.
I'm sure I will.
Yeah. Your time is better spent on commuter parking issues.
It's also currently listed, and then, did we, for some reason, I didn't take this out, I believe we had said we did not want to charge for the notary service. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's a resident service.
Yes.
Just take out the dog tag, one of them.
Yeah, get that, rid of that one and get rid of the dog tags.
Gone. Eliminate the proposal of increasing it, do it on another page. Okay, any other questions on clerks?
Nope.
Eliminated the dog tag. Keeping the taxi licenses, okay.
And you can get rid of E, too.
So, we're choosing the reduction in revenues to eliminate it, so...
That's right.
Yeah, the $200 won't really matter, but...
Right.
Okay. All right. Anything else on clerks?
Nope. Looking good.
Looking good.
All right. HTR Administration Legislation. We have chosen a minimal reduction on method of advertising. We have not, currently, we don't have the cut to go from an 8x10 plaque to 5x7. We're not looking to eliminate any sympathy flowers or the holiday luncheon currently. We are looking at spending the extra $2,000 to get some of our microfilm put onto more readable formats. We are looking at the elimination of the creation and delivery of the packet, sorry, of the paper reports and packets, will just be electronic instead of paper. We're not proposing right now to eliminate a participation in either DuPage Marriage Managers Conference nor the IML. We are looking at moving to one board meeting every other week, as well as the reductions we've already talked about with the newsletter and Neighbors publications, but we're not looking to make any reduction of the DuPage Senior Citizens.
Hey Spencer, can I ask about that, eliminating the board member or the board meetings? Did you take into account a reduction in legal services for those groups?
Yes. Yeah, that was one of the ways that we were able to arrive at that cost. Yep. And then, under community beautification, we're looking at having these items, these are, again, an example of things that we believe or hope can be used in the hotel motel tax fund to cover some of these costs for community beautification. And so, we're proposing eliminating them from this budget and then just minimal office supply costs.
Yeah, it's interesting you say that about community beautification. How would that apply to planting of trees?
Question.
Good question. Yeah.
You will find a way to get some money for your trees.
What's the $2,800 representative we're taking?
That gets rid of all of that, assuming that it would be, come from the hotel motel. But last Christmas, when Mike Chorney and, who was it that worked with Mike on holiday purchases? The stuff that they bought was meant to go long time, you know, they weren't fresh wreaths, they were fakes with the lifetime and all that. And that was part of their spending of the money we had budgeted, was so that it would go for many years. It was just the manpower to hang.
So, that represents the manpower? The $2,800?
It might be. Steve, do you know?
I don't know what that number represents.
Okay.
So, it's, there's an additional $800 for the holiday sound system. I'll pull it up, as you can see. And then there's an additional $2,000 for Christmas decorations, which are not the ones in the downtown, that are just around the, more around the Village Hall area.
Can't that all go to Convention Tourism? Decorations.
Yeah.
Actually...
Shouldn't that be a zero?
Sure.
And beautification?
Yeah.
On that other page?
Yep.
Yeah, because holidays is definitely one of our...
People in?
Our tourism things.
What about flowers? We talked about that briefly.
Flowers and planting.
Essentially, flowers for the downtown.
I mean, if you're going to, if you, if it comes up that those funds can be used for that, then I would rather see some of those funds go for those things, which we haven't had for a long time, but you'll still have a way to keep it, have your planters full, have a lot of that stuff done.
Right.
And I mean, you know, there would be enough money there to cover that and take care of it. I think it'd be money well spent.
I do, too.
I mean, to me, that's, that's promoting your town, people coming through.
Sure.
It just depends on how you look at it, I guess.
One question on the holiday sound system. I don't think we have expended that money in the last couple of years, because we no longer, we use a system that was bought by the WSCC in the Park District, as well as some of...
but you'll still have a way to keep it, have your planters full, have a lot of that stuff done.
Right.
And I mean, you know, there would be enough money there to cover that and take care of it, I think it'd be money well spent.
I do too.
I mean, to me, that's promoting your town, people coming through, but.
Sure.
It just depends on how you look at it, I guess.
One question on the holidays sound system, I don't think we have expended that money in the last couple of years, because we no longer, we use a system that was bought by the WSCC in the Park District, as well as some equipment that we have at Village Hall that we've acquired over the last couple of years, so that $800, I don't think we actually have needed to tap into in the last couple of years. So I just noticed that when it was going through the admin budget. Unless it's used for something else, but I believe it's that sound system we used to use at the stage.
Yeah.
Yeah. Who's gonna tell, who's gonna tell you no?
You may not know, but I think Sue and myself were on the first, as they called it, promote Westmont Commission that then-mayor Jim Eddington formed. We used that, and we had legal opinions, and the way we interpreted the use of that money was that we were promoting the community not only externally, but internally. So if you made this community a better place to live, more people would want to come and visit, hence more people would stay in hotels. We promoted special events, we promoted our community, any marketing, any signage, any special events, came out of that money. And I don't see why we couldn't do that again. We had a grant system back then, when you had to apply for a grant, but I don't see why special events, if they're going to close Cass Avenue, and there's a burden on the street, that we charge X amount of dollars for that, and then they can apply for a grant for that. And that grant then would reimburse us for the use of the street, if it's $1,000 a day, because that's the wear and tear on Cass Avenue and the work we have to do, they can apply for a grant through hotel tax dollars, and that money then would be reimbursed back to the village and goes into our general fund. So I'm a firm believer, unless John has a different opinion, but we had opinions back in, when this was implemented in the 90s. We paid for the whole 75th celebration through hotel tax dollars, so.
Yeah, the actual statute's not very definitive, so it's, there's a lot of room, or at least back then there was, and John will be the final say.
There's been one case, and I don't know the exact year it occurred, with one of our neighboring communities that he was looking at, just to help refine his focus on what we can use it for. But there's only been one case.
And I think you can be cautious, but at the same token, I agree, you know, Lee and everybody else, I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive too, and use these funds that'll benefit the community. So to promote it, again, for our own residents, it means putting flowers on the, back in downtown, or if it means planting trees. And I think we should use it for that.
One of the things I had mentioned with Larry from the chamber, is, I mean, and, or possibly Ron Searl, I was trying to think of who I was speaking to about it, but if we have promotional things such as the Fourth of July celebration, anything like that, we need to get that information to the hotels, so they can advertise it in their stays, to let people know something is happening in the town. And I think that also crosses over and helps, you know, lock it in, that it is used in the proper way, because everything we do here should help the whole thing, it's supposed to be there for their stays. And if they advertise it, and especially the right way, we make sure they have that information well in advance, then they can't complain, because we're doing our best to get people here into the hotels. I do, I've been one to stay in hotels for a month or two, I can guarantee you, I go to that little booth area, and I start looking for something to do when they start having us have days off, we start looking for something that's happening.
The red, white, and barbecue, all, Best Western, the Marriott, and also the Clubhouse has provided discounted rates for the Memorial Weekend. And we're promoting it at each and one of those hotels, in the same token, we're sending that out to all the barbecue vendors and individuals that are coming into town, so we're using the hotels to promote.
And I think the Marriott does a special thing for the Fourth, since it's being shot right in their back, they have a special thing going for their guests who stay.
They sell out, because they actually take one of the CDs for the music, and they, we coordinate it, so they start at the same time we start ours. So they have their own little private party, so they're very pleased to work with us for the Fourth of July. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got that changed, now that it's zero, and you can see our cost now is deficit of $66,316. So, can no changes listed there, and again, just a number of things. Any other questions about H.R. Administration legislation? Okay. Moving on to 08. Which is finance. So we have here, as we've talked about before, there are a couple of different options with methods to be able to save a little bit of money with some staffing costs. And the one, obviously, that we can do now, if we're proposing to have board meetings every other week, is to simply make sure that the board meetings are on the week that is not the payroll week. If we do that, then we can be able to save some time, we don't have to have quite, you know, we can do a little bit of reduction with the method of our staffing. We've got, under the audit section, we have chosen to not eliminate the GFOA award for the Caffer. We've also chosen to not eliminate the GFOA budget award, or to shift to a less engaged staffing model. We have, have a little bit of an increase for additional hours to help administer the places for eating tax. We have currently removed the reduction of the, having an employee pay their own way for some of the GFOA conferences and training. We have adopted the reduction of providing budgets on tablets and using these screens for it. We are not doing the image documentation, excuse me, the document imaging. And then we're also not currently looking at making any change to our police pension particip, or our assistance to either the police pension or the library and their accounting. We are budgeting for a slight increase in the amount the library will be paying us, and that was something that they recommended. Any questions on finance?
Can you go to the top?
Sure.
Yeah.
What was that payroll switch to Wednesday?
So that would be, there were three different methods that we could have done to reduce the way that our staff is structured. Because right now, we have to staff for the levels when we have to take care of producing the finance ordinance, as well as payroll on the same week. So that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, for both of those items. The Wednesday is the time that the finance ordinance is due to the board Wednesday evening. Wednesday evening's also the time when we need to transmit to the bank for a Friday payroll. So if we were to keep, if there was no change with board meetings, if there was no interest in receiving the finance ordinance on Friday as opposed to Thursday, then we could still save the same dollar amount by changing payroll to Wednesday. So it's one or the other, either of these two methods would accomplish the same thing.
But it's the same.
So it's the same dollar amount, we couldn't save an additional $37,000 by changing payday to Wednesday. It's two different ways to get the $37,000. So, I mean, if we're now looking at this, I can just get rid of that, if it's, as well as the finance ordinance every Friday, because
Yeah.
obviously, if we're having, potentially looking at having meetings on Thursday, getting the finance ordinance on Friday would not be very useful.
Makes sense there.
Okay. Again, that was, you know, as we were looking at different options, we wanted to make sure there was a way that we could still achieve the savings, regardless of what the decision was with the board meetings.
Yep, and if it's not too much of a burden, we prefer not to outsource payroll.
Yeah, we're not looking at doing that, and if we're looking at just outsourcing payroll on its own, because it, because we would still have to do all this double checking and all the reviews that we currently do, and because all of our employees are currently on direct deposit, the time savings, the amount of time we spend after we transmit payroll, after we transmit payroll would be minimal. I mean, we transmit it to the bank, or we transmit it to the payroll processing company, so if that was the only thing we're considering, it would actually end up costing us more to outsource payroll, if it's taken in isolation, so, yeah. And it's also very useful to have the payable professional on staff to be able to provide additional guidance and direction, and we're looking at different options. Any other questions? Okay. Planning and zoning commission, there's not much there. To elimination of the commission stipends. With regards to the other commission, the other commission is the Fire and Police Commission, they're meeting tonight, and they are going over their budget, and will have some additional figures for us by Saturday. Much closer than probably by tomorrow, but we'll present them on Saturday. Number 10, fire. So we've, as we just talked about, the additional hiring costs are now put in there. We have looked at, we are not interested in making any of the reductions of either the weekend and daytime incentive, nor a reduction the duty officers pay. We are not looking to reduce the contract medics, one per shift, maintain the same level of staffing that we have currently. We were contractually obligated to have a $97,000 increase, but Curtis has indicated that they'd be willing to waive that, let us stay at our same rate currently, as we've been very good with working with the village with regards to that. We're looking at continuing to maintain the Fire Prevention Bureau Director's a part-time employee, but we're not looking to reduce any further time, either from the administrative assistant or the inspectors. We're not interested in moving down to two inspections per year. I'm sorry, to two years for each inspection. So instead of inspection annually, we could potentially look at inspecting every two years.
Especially with smoke and fire, we want to make sure that our inspections are up.
We've adopted these other items here, the increase in medical evaluations, the minor reductions in uniforms and building maintenance, as well as, but we have not decided to discontinue accreditation, so we will be continuing accreditation currently. We are looking at B and C, as we found other entities to sponsor the first A-10, potentially Hotel Motel could help with that cover, to cover that item. We're looking at, obviously, eliminating the one-time cost we put in this year's budget for the rewrite of our EOP, but we're not looking to postpone EMAs, operational supply purchases. We are looking at reducing one-time costs and bringing things to actual, just minimal things, generally just with Starcom-related items. And we are planning on having our communication staff be reimbursed, our cost of communication staff would be reimbursed. We're not looking at reducing our specialty teams. And the only item we're looking at reduction in public education is the fact that we've obtained sponsors for the safety camp, so that will be covering that. We're not looking to make any changes in our callback procedure, nor to eliminate the implement weather additional staffing. We're planning to continue with the additional staffing and continue with callbacks, so that we make sure we've got the full coverage we need in case of, in case things get worse than anticipated. We are looking at a reduction in staff costs by moving mandatory training to online training. And we are looking at reducing the training officer's hours, just to, we're reducing just the budgeted amount to more accurately reflect his actual hours. And then you can see that change in grants, this year, instead of $170,000 worth of grants, we have $115,000 worth of grants. You can see under the revenues, we've got the increase that we received from our, from the tax levy. Each year, the tax levy generates an additional increase, that we're allowed to cover the increased costs. It's based on CPI, so it's an inflationary increase. We've got the, all these items that say March 13th, are items that have been previously discussed, approved at the March 13th board meeting, and as has been previously discussed, these items have been reduced by an accurate percentage. So these are not the numbers that were originally presented at the March meeting, but they've been reduced after conversation with our billing provider to more accurately reflect what actual revenue we may receive from them. There's the grants, again, and then just more of the March 13th items. Any other questions on, with regards to fire?
We just ensure that our program continues the way it's supposed to.
That's right. Let me skip over water and go back to the works in general first. So we've got, the brush pickup, as we talked about, there'll be an addition, some additional reduction here with regards to moving to two instead of four. We're not looking at any reduction in alley maintenance. With tree maintenance, we're looking at minor reduction in pruning and watering. We're not looking at any increases in anything for tree removals. And with regards to tree planting, the only reduction we're looking at is the reduction in tree size, so still continuing to plant the same number of trees, just smaller diameter and saving the $39,000. We're not looking to cut the number of trees we plant in half, nor are we looking to only plant based on the village cost share program. We are looking with the streets and sewers, currently at eliminating any new lines, just kind of maintaining the status quo. We're not looking at any change in the way we do sidewalks. Sorry, sir.
I said that's scary, but we don't have a choice. Every time there's an eruption on Richmond, we're reminded. Maybe Hanover Park is the right idea.
We're looking at no change in the way that we do our pavement markings, nor in the way we do our auxiliary or community information signs. We are looking at a slight reduction in sweet, street sweeping, but not looking to eliminate it completely. We do have a $64,000 reduction in the amount of salt we'll need to purchase base, because of the mild winters we've had the last couple of years, and the amount of, no, we the few snowstorms regarding the amount of salt we now have on hand, we've got a lot of salt, we don't need to purchase as much next year. But we're not looking at eliminating the snow removal from the central business district, nor are we looking at making it only plowing during work hours to eliminate overtime. We are looking at doing no grading for our right-of-way maintenance. We're not looking at, we're not looking to purchase any of these items, stand loader, backhoe, chippers, or stump grinder. We're not looking to eliminate our trade-in with the Bobcat, we find it to be very useful to be able to get a new Bobcat for that small amount of trade-in, but we're also not looking to replace doors and fence. We're not looking at eliminating all training other than those required for licenses, nor are we looking at a reduction in uniforms. We are expecting some additional reimbursements, again, from hotel motel taxes for special events.
Wait, can you, what was the special events again?
Sure, so the Public Works Department has a lot of participation in special events, and setting up for the special events, taking down the special events. And we're looking at, hopefully, being able to be reimbursed by the hotel motel tax fund to be able to cover those special events, which draw people to our community.
So the special events are continuing?
Yes, special events would be continuing, just the funding source would be different. So rather than coming out of the general fund, it would be, we'd be able to use the hotel motel taxes.
Why wouldn't all of it be out of hotel motel? Why is there still $44,000 there? Is there certain events that aren't considered tourism?
Let's see.
What's the breakdown on A, is to?
Right.
Let's see.
I thought it was the police and, and, Public Works.
I think it's basically labor.
Yeah, I thought-
It's the $44,000, I think is what that is, and you can't, you can't spend hotel motel tax dollars on labor.
Yeah, yep, that's what it is.
It's labor.
It's the labor, yeah.
For use for the events?
You cannot, you cannot use those kind of funds for, no, to pay labor, you can't do that.
Reimburse us some percentage, they, WSCC reimburse us some percentage of the labor costs they do for the police? What about all the work that Public Works has to do? I thought that that was one of the things that John was looking into, that he thought we may be able to do that.
I don't see why not, I mean, I don't know the law, but to me, it sounds like very good reason, it's bringing people in, it's the direct result from it. I, but that's just my opinion, I don't know.
It's probably going to get shuttled there anyway, because special events was hoping to get some hotel motel tax this year, and that'll probably just get shuttled around to help offset some of the costs that it's costing us, that we may have to charge them.
Just as a side note, I'd like to see what the special events books are too.
Yeah.
Currently.
Because they keep, they keep asking for money or negotiating on the cost of the police officers for security purposes and all that, but they don't want to show us how much they're making off those beer tents.
Have we, have we gotten a budget from them for a while?
Nope.
I don't think we've, no.
Given them money.
We have not given them money in several years, and it used to be part of that process, that they would come in and give us a report from the previous year, but.
Right, it's a private entity now, though, but if they come, if they come to the village and they request convention tourism dollars, I think it behooves this village to say, okay, we want to see the books to justify the cost.
Right, and it's not a report.
Whether or not, whether or not you, not just a report, an actual accounting for everything that goes into it. That would include any CDs they've got, any of that stuff, I mean, any of it.
Oh, it was, it was always intended to get to some kind of a self-funding anyhow.
Right, and that was, that was the whole purpose, is to be totally self-funding. That was the whole purpose of it.
But if they're going to get any money that could otherwise go for something in, you know, that we have list, you know, tree plantings or whatever, they're going to have to open the books and that, you know, it requires their auditor thing, we don't have to have Spencer audit their books for them, but it's more than a report from, you know, a board member telling us what their, what their financial picture looks like.
Yeah, I think initially we were looking at covering the overtime costs that are part of the special events, is having those being reimbursed. We can look again. We went through and assigned values of each individual employee's salary to the different categories, and the amount that was initially listed here is 5% of their time towards special events, so that would be 5% of their regular salary. We can go through and verify how up-to-date and accurate that is, and we could, we can look into reimbursing those if there are, if there is some additional time that would go towards those kind of things. My guess is some of this time would be including items such as setting up for holiday, holidays and those kind of things. I'm assuming that was part of the.
That's why columning doesn't match the other columns. The, the other ones were just the, the biggest events, it's not all of the events. You've got holidays, cruising nights, you have a lot of, and now, as of last night, we just enhanced, you know, participation in cruising nights because of the.
Pretty close here.
The extravagant, not the extravagant, the, the enhanced, you know, traffic control for that event, so that all adds up. And had we known that, that might have been one of the bigger, you know, categories too, because it's significant.
It was like a Freudian slip, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Subject to weather, though. Yeah.
Well, whether there's good weather or bad weather, we have to assume it's going to go on, so we do all that work, and if they don't have it, we've still done all the work. So on our end, it doesn't change.
Especially for the taste, when they're getting all that income, and, you know, our employees are doing a lot of work and, you know, we're not getting the income from the carnival or the, or the beer tents, so.
You're not getting any revenue from the beer tent?
No, sir.
They're working the beer tent last Sunday, and there was only one flavor of beer left, Miller Lite. It was so popular, they ran out of, I think they had four or five different brands of beer, or kinds of beer, Liney Red and, they ran out of it. When I reported Sunday for my, all that beer was sold out, and the wine was still there Sunday, but they totally miscalculated how much beer they needed. I guess there was a person in charge, but I can't believe, that would be a gold mine, I would think.
We're not saying there isn't revenue from the beers, it's not the village's revenue, it's a different organization.
Yeah, WSCC is a separate corporation, Westmont Special Events, separate entity, separate everything. So we just want to make sure that, you know, if we're using Westmont's Public Works to do all the street blocking off, that if they're, if they are, and I shouldn't say showing a profit, because they're a not-for-profit, but if they are taking enough income to have all kinds of hootenannies going on, then Public Works should be reimbursed to some extent.
I felt a lot of beer in that beer tent. It was incredible, I couldn't believe it. I've never been a bartender before, and I was just there for four hours. I never stopped moving, and that was the last days, the last few hours.
But of course, Ron, come on, quit asking.
The Special Events Corporation, the last several years, the Westmont Auto Mile's been funding them about 15,000 a year, and again, the village is putting 24,000 in, so indirectly, I think they are getting still some village money. The Westmont Special Events Corporation will use some of that profit to, to offset their cruising nights and some of their other events that they cannot generate money from, but there's no doubt, they, they're the only special event in the community that has the opportunity to generate money. The Fourth of July, as you know, costs, not only, it's a joint event between the village and the park, it costs both of us subsidized to, in order to have that. And then the holidays, it really doesn't have the opportunity to generate enough money to cover it, so it still takes a subsidy between the park and the village to offer that to the community. The difference is that the Special Events Corporation started, the village started it with the 75th anniversary, and then Main Street picked it up, and now the Special Events have run it. Their goal is to generate enough profit to be self-sufficient, and they still haven't quite done that, I think. And I would tend to agree with you, I think you probably should look at the books and just see where they're at as far as their balance.
It's no different than any other festival we've ever had. We always had checks and balances for powwow days.
Well, I think it's part of due diligence.
You know, I mean, for the Polka Fest, for, you know, anything we've ever done in town, we've pretty much had a check.
If we're going to, if we're going to fund anything, be it in labor or cash, for anybody, we owe it to the residents to make sure that this isn't, you know, that it's appropriately done. I mean, to ignore it and just go, you know, yahoo, good, you know, great event, it's, you're, you're not doing your job, so.
Well, the difference is that the $24,000 two, three years ago, and I understand what Ron is saying, that consortium does fund it, but we pay that money to the Chamber of Commerce, and they, they do provide us, you know, their books each year to look at. What they, what the corporation gets from the Chamber, I, you know, I don't know.
They get 15, they get 15, and they fund the fireworks out of that Westmont Auto Mile this past several years, the 30, 33,000. They give holidays 10,000, and then give the special, the Taste of Westmont 15. I think they even gave the barbecue 1,000 in the past. But again, the barbecue, Holy Trinity's Fest, the Taste is not village-sponsored, so every direct cost for the village should be incurred by those special events. You know, all the way from 100% of the police protection to any cost that we incur with the street department, Public Works Department. The events that we run jointly, either between the village and the park that's done for the community, we subsidize those through our budgets. But anybody else, or else we're going to open the doors for everybody else to have parades, to have festivals, if we continue to subsidize and pay for that, we just can't do it.
I agree with you, that's why I'm saying that.
Jim Addington's coming up.
Well, I kind of just reiterate what you said. I, because of, with the Lions and the barbecue, I, I feel the same way. This village was, was kind enough seven years ago to, to stand behind the barbecue when we started, and didn't have any money, and, and supported it to the point now where we've got an unbelievably successful event. But I see no reason, again, I would, I would have to defer to, to village attorney to John, but I see no reason why we, as Alliance Club, shouldn't be covering whatever costs of that 44,000, and then if, if, if there's money in Hotel Motel, so you want to help support that event, you can do so. And I think they're two different animals. One goes in the general fund, one comes out of, out of the promotional fund, and, and I see no reason why it can't be done that way. And therefore, there should be no cost to the park district or the village for, for, for the event that the Lions Club runs. And, and, you know, but it's figuring out what's the right way to do it, what's the legal way to do it, and, and I think you're in that, you're already in that direction, so, but I think that's the way to go with it. And that eliminates, if you can eliminate that 44,000, we've just wiped out two, two-thirds more of the deficit, so.
So as a policy, we say, any special event that involves staff time, we would charge the entity for that, and if I understand what former mayor Addington is suggesting is a reconstitution of the grant type program, and assuming that the village attorney is agreeable that those sort of things would be eligible, they could apply. Pardon?
I, I think the biggest thing is, in dealing with this also and figuring that out, but I think the biggest thing that you have to remember in this go-around is, not necessarily the special events, but like we were talking about, the beautification of the community. If those funds can be used in that category, I would rather see them use funds that way, instead of, instead of throwing, instead of throwing party after party after party.
I understand the priority, yeah. If there's money left over, we could make it available for those organizations, but the policy, if, I guess I'm asking is what I'm asking. Do you want us just to universally say that those organizations are going to have to pay for that staffing?
I think so.
Yes.
I don't think it's right to ask.
A misinterpretation of what I heard?
No, I mean, the way the promote Westmont was originally set up, we had X amount of dollars a year to appropriate. It wasn't the whole 500,000. It was, you know, 75,000, whatever the board deemed that was available for special events in the community, that's it. Then it was the job of that commission, and we, it doesn't have to be a commission, it can just be a committee, then to approve those requests, and then it was the job of that organization to come back in and give us a final report. So it doesn't have to be this unlimited amount of money. We could set just a, a certain amount, and then that's all that's available. So, and then the rest should go towards the community.
But, Ron, as I understand your question, I agree with you. If it is a, if it is a private event, and not one put on by the village, you know, individually or in conjunction with the park district, which some of them are, then the staff cost should be reimbursed.
Well, I'm actually, I'm actually asking for clarification, is, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'd like to see.
Not advocating it necessarily.
No, I know, that's what I'd like to see.
I think that's kind of the general consensus of what's being said here.
That's how it has to be.
Not only, not only, not only by us, but by our, our future mayor-elect, as well as trustee-elect, I mean, it's.
The only thing that I would ask John to do is whether you have to put in force some type of ordinance so that people understand, it's not just a handshake and a understanding.
Right, we probably will.
Yep.
Without going to the podium, let me just say that.
Because Tom has had it over there, he likes a podium.
Yeah, but Jim made a comment, that the village house driveway, the car may be going to happen, and I know, you know, he did an awful lot of work for, let's say, the district, so if there's a, if there's a pool of money like Ron is suggesting, then there's an option, there's a start, otherwise you're limiting yourself to the two or three that you have, and have no other option.
Like seed money.
Yeah, seed money.
Seed money, and that's what I'm hearing up here.
Mm-hmm.
That's how I'm understanding it. I think we need a little more information from the village attorney before we can probably come to you and say, okay, we recommend that we'll have a grant program of X amount of dollars, or we think this is reasonable. I don't, my guess is it won't be anywhere near what we had years past, but as you do recall, we did have a smaller program for a number of years as well. So soon as we get that definition cleared up and go through this, we can let you know what we think we can afford.
Yeah, because I'm in favor of that, except, you know, I'm keeping in mind that we're pretty much living check to check, and we're going to need a new roof and a new driveway pretty soon in the, you know, except our driveway's like 61 miles long. And we don't have a, we don't have a money for a rainy day, you know, when, you know, when everybody's just like driving down casts like this, because the potholes are so bad. So I, I won't have any say in it, because I won't be on the board, but before I leave, my preference is that, just so that people understand, there's not going to be a lot of seed money for parties.
I keep bouncing up. Um, you didn't, the problem is, you didn't let me talk, no, I didn't get a chance to talk Saturday, now I'm going to make up for it tonight. The hotel tax dollars, is there any stipulation requirement legal that would require you to spend it within a certain period of time? Can you accumulate it?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no.
No, no, there's no restriction on, that I'm aware of, that never has been.
It's only on use, not on.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so you can accumulate it till you have one major, if you decide there's something that you want to spend it on? I don't know if a roof would qualify, unless you put it, made it a green roof.
Set money aside, yeah, and I didn't know exactly where we were going with the 60 miles of streets, and I was thinking, well, when you said driveway, I thought you were talking about the Westmont Center driveway.
No, I, no, I was saying that check to check, you know, from a personal standpoint, but when you, when you extrapolate it to a village, we need sewers, and we need water mains, and we need.
Certainly do need to put money aside for capital reinvestment in the Westmont Center, as long as we continue to operate that. Yeah, and I think that's what you're driving.
Well, I'm saying, if that's, originally that was built with hotel tax dollars, it operated, so if that can go back to that same philosophy, then that sort of repairs might be able to come out of that, if the, if the legal interpretation allows it.
And, and I think, I think the other thing is too, you might want to check with your soon-retiring facilities manager on some of the things and the cost, major costs that are coming up on that building, because they are not cheap.
Might have three years' worth of hotel tax.
It would be much, it would be much cheaper if you could get a big fluorescent for sale sign, and put it right on the front of that building.
I'll just sell tickets to swing the wrecking ball from the crane, and it's.
It's, it's a costly building.
But when I said roof and driveway, I meant village-wide.
Village-wide roof and driveway.
I got that eventually, I was like.
I mean, you know, we can look at a million different ways to use that money, but until we have the legal opinion, it's just a dream, and I know it's a fine line, so.
Before you go off to special events, there's something that I was talking to Tom about, if he can mention it, because I feel important.
Where is he?
He's behind, behind me, see?
That's why we can't, that's why we can't see him.
Okay, you're going like this.
He's behind you, that's why we can't see him.
Wow, and this. We have to budget an adjustable podium.
I never stand behind podiums very often. One point that we want to talk about is also to make sure that for the village services, police, you know, public safety, fire department, as well as Public Works, that the private corporations don't try to outsource. And so if you're going to, you know, they say, well, the police department's going to cost too much, it's going to be $8,000, I can't afford that. I can go get private security, that's not something we recommend, nor we would ever support. It's just that for the taste and all the other events, it should be our fire department, our police department, our Public Works doing this, not outsourcing, and that was one thing I'd like to make sure the board acknowledges.
Okay.
Anything else on Public Works? There's the several items in fleet we're not.
You have, you have some numbers in mind, Mr. May, for the building?
Don't know.
Okay. We're good.
All right, so I think that finishes off our general fund, and so we're looking at, currently at a $69,000 deficit. And any other questions on the general fund currently? Okay.
Certainly hoping that the opinion on Hotel Motel will not only balance, but put us.
Yeah, that could solve our problems.
Way nice.
So the next item or a few other funds, let me just skip ahead of the agenda, so we can get water, so we can go in order of this, if that's okay with the board. That's fine. Hit water briefly. So, give the 1,000-foot view with water. Right now, we're looking at operating revenues of about 5.7 million, and proposed operating expenditures of about 6.2 million. On the infrastructure side, we're looking at about 1.6 million in revenues that we've dedicated for infrastructure, and about 1.5 million of infrastructure-type expenses. We estimate we'll have a beginning balance of about $2 million at the beginning of this budget, and then at the end of the fiscal year, we estimate that would be about 1.6 million. So our water fund balance, which has historically been fairly high, has been, you know, being reduced a little bit over the last couple of years, as we've done some costly water main repairs, and so we're potentially looking at ending the budget with 1.6 million, and that's the number you see up here, is the estimated ending balance of water. As we go through here, that's basically what we're considering. So this first item is just minimal, just. So this first item is just minimal, just, you know, sort of trimming the budget, making the budget a little bit closer to actual costs. This next item with fire hydrants, we're looking at, instead of replacing our 10 fire hydrants, which we currently do, 10 fire hydrants a year, we'd be looking at replacing five on a proactive basis. Obviously, we'd replace any that had problems. With the distribution, the one item we have here is an increased purchase, the increased cost to purchase water because of the increases by the, from the sources where we get our water from, the City of Chicago, as well as the DuPage Water Commission.
Are we passing that through?
We are passing that through, so you'll see the same $540,000 increase in revenues as well. So it's, it offsets itself, but there, it's an increase in both items. We're not looking at making any change with our valve exercising program. We can save the 40,000 with the triannual leak detection, because we're not doing that in 2014, we're not doing it in 2014, we just did that. Looking at materials, we're not looking at any change with that, or we're not looking at capping well six. There's not a lot of things we're looking at changing around here till we get to the meter replacement program. As you recall, we had about $1.1 million, which we spent on the meter replacement program this past year. Some of that is due to salaries, but the majority of it is actually purchasing the meters. We're looking at reducing it, only doing 1,000 meters this year, so we can save $733,000 compared to last year's budget. And then moving into some of the capital type of expenditures, we've got...
Spencer, I just want to ask Steve May a question on the meter replacement. If we were to suspend that program, because I know it's been going on for a couple of years now, and I think there's still quite a bit that has to be done, but if we were to suspend it even for, you know, half of the budget year, or the whole budget year, what if, how, I mean, if we suspended it for one year, what does that do to the keeping, you know, the most current equipment, and, you know, are we, would that place us in a situation of where the first ones that were replaced are now outdated?
Before you answer that, can I add to that question to put into the mix? All the work that Mike Ramsey did, and he did all the presentation about the, I believe it was a 20-year plan between, you know, the towers, the water meter replacements, everything.
Set the cost.
Yeah, where he, where he set the cost, and he also set the clock. And I thought we approved it as per his and your recommendations, and does this now upset that whole 20-year plan that you guys had laid out? So that's why I'm interrupting your answer to see where that fits in.
With that, given that it's in a 20-year plan, if it happens somewhere in the 20 years, it'll balance out eventually. There's pros and cons to changing them all. If you, if we did every single meter, I think the first year we did 1,000, this year we did 2,000, I think there's maybe 3,000 left. I don't know if that added up, right? But there's, if you replaced 100% of the meters in the first year, then they're also all getting old at the same time. So there's some asset to spreading it out a little bit. But conversely, and I don't know the date, but there's also, I don't know if it's part of the lead copper rule, but there's, the meters are being changed because the new meters can't have the same metal contents in them, and these are all, you know, not only are they no-moving parts, but they were all plastic too. So the, you know, the asset is, I'd have to look into when the actual drop dead date is on that law, but I don't think we're in jeopardy. He was willing to, you know, reduce it down to 1,000 meters replaced. The balance was 3,000, so the option B was to go down to 2,000. We would have a difficult time, you know, getting that many done in one year anyway. We do it by contract, and I think the current year that we're in right now had 2,500 in the contract, and they still have 200 that they're having difficulty getting to the, into the homes.
Well, I didn't think this was...
I mean, it was a full year already.
I knew you'd discuss this, but I'm really for option D until we can investigate the contract further, based on my personal experience with them, their service isn't the best, and something I talked to a couple of trustees about, I didn't get to talk to you about it, trustee Emery or trustee Klebinau, but I think it warrants it based on my experience, which is terrible, and I don't wish that upon anybody in the resident, or any resident at all, and it's, it's very unfortunate what happened, I don't need to get into that, but there's also some other things that haven't been confirmed yet that I think we need to find out about this contract before we continue letting them work in here.
For reasons related to the issue, it has been suspended, so they're currently doing nothing right now. Like I said, there's 200 left to do, and there's no more appointments. The, assuming that gets resolved or changed, or a different vendor, or whatever the resolution is, if you suspend it here, that ensures that you can do nothing for an entire year.
Okay.
So you can still have the money in the budget and not proceed until that's solved, but just a different way to look at it.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Are we in year three, or what year are we in? Because I know we started...
The second year.
Oh, we're only in the second year? Okay. And this, yeah, this takes C. All right, so we, you'll find out about the drop dead date.
Whatever the date is, but he wouldn't have listed the option in there if it wasn't available.
Yeah, because I know he gave it a little wiggle room, but not a lot.
So we could go down to 1,000 meters and, you know, in the next fiscal year, without a concern.
Okay. Because my only concern, and I, we can suspend it till we get the problems resolved, but I think we still have to budget it so that when the problems are resolved and they're up and running again, we're not all of a sudden, you know, crunched that we got to do, you know, 2,000 and 1,000 or whatever, but at least, because Steve, with the way that you and Mike work, I can't see it taking another year to get those, those problems solved.
I would agree.
So that's why I think, you know, suspend it temporarily, but budget it.
It is suspended right now.
But what are you budgeting, 1,000?
1,000. 1,000 meters.
1,000 meters.
The way it is with C.
And you're prepared, if you pick it up again, okay?
Okay, that's cool.
Right, and then moving into some of the...
That also gives us, that also gives us padding in, in Public Works if there's a geyser. Because that would be our luck. That we would have money and go, now we really got to suspend it and fix the...
The water tower on 55th Street? Give it out?
Yeah.
All right, so these next options are, so this is to replace a current water vehicle, unit 201, which is up for replacement and is getting old and in need of replacement. This is to purchase a new, the D, Gator vehicle, is to purchase a new vehicle to be able to do some additional work, especially with painting of fire hydrants and those kind of things. It could also be used...
There are many uses, and it's, you know, it's something that doesn't require, you know, a pickup truck. It's just a more utility vehicle, smaller, more efficient.
Have we exhausted all of our ways that we can do in our governmental agreements on equipment that's pretty specialty, so we could share the cost with downers, or...
Well, we do always look for those opportunities, but in this particular case, we expect that to be a well-used vehicle in the, well, I was going to say the warm, wetter months, but the winter too. I mean, it's, it's, that's the purpose for suggesting it.
Right.
And then the end loader is another 150,000. So those are the items that are currently listed here. And then the only one listed on this second line is the ductile pipe chainsaw. And then as regards water tank improvement, we're looking at North Water Tower, and that number is one that we keep putting in the budget as a placeholder in case something becomes available. We've got the South Water Tower painting and the cathodic protection for those water towers. We've got the water main improvements, as well as starting some design work on West End Comner, and then we've got some building improvements listed here for the garage roof, garage floor, meter shop chimney. And then we've got the request for the material bins, which we expect to be around 200,000.
Yeah, because past years, Public Works has gone without for a long time, and there's just a lot of stuff they need that there's no postponing it anymore.
Yeah, and with the estimated ending balance of 1.6, we think, we think it'll be okay. It's not going to have a lot of wiggle room, you know, in future budget years, but we think we'll make it through this one, okay?
Good. Any questions on that, from anyone, public?
Is this the end? Because I have...
Not yet, I'm sorry. But you can ask your question anytime.
Sure.
Just a suggestion, so I'll wait until the end.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, unless it's...
Open mic? Who said that? Oh, I thought it was open mic.
All right. I think we've discussed convention tourism, I don't know if we need to go into that again, I think we've discussed that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can we talk about reducing our fleet by two cars, which would be going to the continued use part? And also, we spoke earlier, I just want to make sure it's in there. If we sold two vehicles, because we're reducing our current fleet by two, we anticipated a cost of, or revenue by selling the cars at auction of about $5,000, $6,000 a car, did that get put in?
We do have a minimal amount for sale of assets in the vehicle replacement program. Yeah.
We figured that we would get, that's one thing with the board to note, we're, not only we would save the equipment, but we'd also like to get a $10,000 savings to the village as well, or revenue possibly.
Good.
Yeah, so we do have some revenue in the vehicle replacement program with the sale of fixed assets. I mean, we don't generally anticipate very much of that, and we, you know, don't really want to base our budget or our funding structure on those, it's just sort of additional money that helps make sure we have the funds available to take care of those vehicles in the future.
Good.
All right, this next sheet goes through a couple of different funds, and maybe I'll just look at it on here, it might just be slightly easier. So our employee benefit sick time, our downtown parking fund. I'll just look at the funds carry forward, so you can see the entire balances. So our employee benefit sick time, as we've talked about this before, this is a fund that is just used for accounting purposes, to account for the liability which we have with our sick time benefit. So the only activity you see in it is the revenues of an estimated $100 for interest. Is, the money we have are listed as assets, and then, and typically it's a lot of due from general funds, due from the water fund, and then the, when we pay it out, it simply reduces our liability and reduces the cash, so it doesn't hit the expenses at all. Our downtown parking fund, we currently have about $5,000 is cash balance. We expect, after some revenues, such as parking, employee downtown parking permits, as well as downtown parking citations, we think we may have up to $7,000 in that fund. And then skipping down to our emergency reserve fund, we've got 946,000 in there currently. We're estimating about 1,400 coming in, so the balance would be about 948,000.
Got a couple of those.
Any questions on those, sort of minor funds? Okay. The vehicle replacement fund. So vehicle replacement fund, this sheet shows the different amounts for the few different vehicles that would actually be up for replacement this time. Got the proposal for four squads, four patrol squads, one ambulance, and then a street sweeper. Those are the vehicles that would be up for replacement. And then, as we've talked about previously, pull up the funding sheet. We'd be looking at transferring about $792,000 worth from the general fund into the vehicle replacement fund to cover the forward funding of vehicles, rather than leasing them or paying, you're taking out a loan when it's time to get the vehicles, we'd like to, you know, save the money up initially. So we're looking at adjusting our length of time over which we will keep ambulances, so we don't have to set aside quite as much each year. We're looking at adjusting to three pumpers, but there'll be an increased cost for the pumpers, and we're looking at an extra 23, almost $24,000 to convert one of our, one of the remaining three pumpers into a quint, so that it also has the ability to be a ladder truck and can maintain the village's ISO rating at the level of two. The squads and ladder truck, all the way through here, as we've talked about before, there'll be adjustments for each additional year, and so there's just minor adjustments that are proposed there. We're looking at the elimination of the funding for the communications van, as we believe we've got another entity that's willing to take that over and continue to allow us to use it hopefully at no cost. And then, just adjusting the trailer amounts. We've talked, we just talked about doing the four squads per year, and what we've identified the amount of savings we could do if we instead chose to do three squads per year. And we're looking at increasing the length of our life of our police vehicles that are not squads, so the investigations vehicles, some of those type of vehicles, and then...
So the number on the squads reflects income option B, and I thought we had reached a consensus, or pretty well close to it, on moving that down to three per year, so that it would be a four-year turnover rather than a three-year turnover. Was I missing something?
I believe the mechanic had expressed some concerns about the maintenance costs with that, and concern about their continued, their ability to be used for continued use and their life after that. I don't know if, I believe the chief had mentioned something about that at the last meeting, I don't know. Obviously, it's a discretion of the board, so we can certainly change that.
Police staff met with the mechanics and our staff, and we recommended four every three years, I believe.
So four vehicles each year to replace it on a three-year cycle, is that what you're saying, chief?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we discussed last time.
Yeah, that's, that's it. Okay, because I know, all right.
Right, he did not recommend a four-year cycle. Definitely, because then the mileage would be too high. Using the basic average mileage, we'd be close to 80,000 to 100,000 per car, not good for police use, and also then we would lose on the value of a resale, and also for continued use, it'd hurt us that way. So he recommended that the most would be a three-year rotation period.
No offense, chief, but the resale value isn't good, period, so...
Well, and the continued use, and then the, also the average of each vehicle is going to get higher, because the same miles are being put on by 12 cars instead of 14. So the average went high, and to transition between the two-year cycle we have now to a three-year cycle means some of the vehicles are going to hit four years old anyway, so going to a four-year cycle would mean someone hit five and they'd be over 100,000 miles.
Okay.
It would really aggravate it.
Yeah, we say with that thing, it's been on our long meeting.
Even on the three-year or four-year cycle, is that still going to give some vehicles to go over to the fire department for their work?
Three-year cycle would be better, because we're figuring, you know, you're going to have vehicles in the mileage area of 50, maybe 60 at the most miles. That would be continued use for street department, IT. The mechanic decides where the vehicles are going to go based on need and condition of the other cars. And if you, again, if you go to the four-year cycle, you're probably going to be getting cars with 80,000 to 100,000 miles on it, somewhere in that area, not good for continued use. The fire department would be getting a car, probably replacing a car, this happened to me once, you replaced my car with 110,000 with a car that had 100,000, you know, just 10,000 miles difference, and it's...
Got a deal.
Yeah. I like the other car better.
And the other option, which was just alluded to, is the, currently we have two SUVs, so with the 12 squads and the two SUVs that also work on patrol, we have 14 vehicles, and the proposal is to eliminate those two. And the items that are currently done in the SUV can be done in the new patrol cars, and so we would just simply have 12 vehicles instead of the total of 14. So that's a $25,000 reduction, and then extending the van an extra year. Public Works, we're looking at potentially increasing the life from the currently, currently we try to fund it so we can replace it within 10 years, we'd be shifting to refund that to fund it so we could replace it within 15. The one ton dump trucks would be moving to 12 years. The sweepers would be adjusting for an additional year, be looking at moving pickups from 10 to 12. And the utility trucks would be looking at 12 years, no, I'm sorry, C. So it'd be look, be moved to 15 years, and then the change for... And then the change for a utility truck to a chipper. And then we'd be looking at increasing the length of time for the bucket truck. And we'd have the two shippers and that's reflected with that. Any questions on Public Works vehicles? Questions on vehicle funding or vehicle replacement at all? All right, the capital projects fund, one that we, we talked about briefly the last time. We talked about how we have some ongoing costs that occur every year and then we have some additional costs that are more of the special project variety. We have, currently we have 12 copiers and our copier leases come out of this fund. And we'd be looking at reducing those to nine copiers at the village. And these are copiers, printers, scanners, multifunctional devices, MFDs. And so we could save $12,000 by doing that. We could potentially also do some additional spending to get some copy automation, document management, but given the current budget this year, we don't think that that's our best option. We'd like to hold off on that, simply reduce the copiers and be able to save a little bit of money for some additional projects. We have the, last year, as you'll recall, we had debt service on the vehicle replacement program. We had the remainder of a few payments for a 10-year purchase. We had done a 10-year lease payment and we were nearing the end of that. The village board decided this fiscal year to pay off the remainder of that, and so we no longer have the debt service going into next year. And there's a minor adjustment to make our debt service for the land accurate. Next, we're moving into the projects and because these are all increase amounts and they're specific projects that are in orange. So on the first line, we have some improvements to the fire. Let me first of all jump down and kind of go over the bottom-line figures briefly. We've got minimalling, increase in revenues. We do have an extra $27,000 because water sales is going to be going up $27,000. We do have that added taxes since they're charged similar to a utility at the 5% rate. So currently, we're looking at $840,000 worth of revenues. What we've currently listed as expense is $870,000. So we're looking at a $29,000 deficit, which is not uncommon in the capital projects fund. Often you save up money in some years and then you use it as you have your special projects. So we're anticipating, starting with a balance of 1 million 370,000 and ending with a cash balance of approximately 1 million 340,000. So with that in mind, let me walk you through these different options and the different items that have been selected. As the board's aware, over the past couple of years, we've been working on half of the roof of the fire station. We've been dealing with the south half and that's been approved in the budget and has been taken care of. We're now looking at doing the second half of that project, taking care of the roof on the north, north side of the fire station, which would be 76,000. And for the cost of the construction, then another 21,000 for engineering, and then 65,000, an additional 65,000 or part of that, which would be the relocation of the HVAC, because that is what ended up causing some of the problems with the roof in the first place. And we would also be replacing the HVAC with a better system and, and moving it for a total cost of 162,000 for the fire department roof and all the aspects of that. On the second line, we are, there are several items that have been listed as possible items, the ones that have sort of been identified as the highest priority by staff at this point. And obviously, this is all subject to, you know, the board's priorities and so we're presenting them to you for any changes in priority. But what we've initially identified is a railing replacement at the fire headquarters along with the sidewalk replacement for public access into the training room. And they both go hand in hand. It's a railing along by the sidewalk, and so the total cost for those items is 36,000. With Public Works building, and the other items that are listed here are valuable items. It'd be good to do at some point, but we feel we could probably hold off on them and that these are a little bit higher priority at the moment. The next few items are dealing with Public Works building and the science shop floor and the roof of the science shop are in the state that we're not able to currently be using the science shop, and so we'd be looking to repair them so that that would be usable again. Can you see there's some items, fences and other equipment purchases that we're not Then getting on to infrastructure, we are looking at doing the ones that we are currently committed to. So we're currently in the process of Hidden View Drive, the 60th Stream Bank stabilization, Buellwood subdivision drain line project, and Ogden Avenue signal upgrades is something that we're able to do as a result of the state taking care of some, the state's doing a lot of work along Ogden Avenue. We're able to utilize some of their assistance to take care of it and we're able to get our signals upgraded for a very, very small cost. So we're also proposing that. And then we're also looking at proposing to continue work on the Eagle Creek subdivision. And then with, we're not, while we think that all of these are, you know, the central business district alley reconstruction, some alley resurfacing, Cumberner's and right-of-way acquisitions are all good items, we want to keep in mind, given our current situation, the current funds that we have available, we would be looking, we wouldn't be looking to do any of them this year. We would be looking to continue work on our ADA transition plan study, which is a requirement that we have. And those are, that's the extent of our current proposals. Any additional questions, comments? Almost done. Motor fuel tax fund.
That's good because we're almost out of money.[1183.33][1183.33](laughing)
The motor fuel tax fund is the fund where we have all of our revenues from the state motor fuel tax. So the state collects the motor fuel tax and then shares a portion of it with municipalities on a per capita basis. The amount of revenue we receive from that has been going down. An IML estimates that it will drop another 22,000 this year. Figuring in some additional grant reimbursements, we expect, we anticipate our total revenues will be 745,000 this year. We estimate that we'll be starting with a fund balance of about 2.4 million. And then what we typically do in the motor fuel tax fund is we have a lot of projects where we are waiting for the state to bill us, and so we have to continue to list them. And so you'll see a lot of these projects will be listed year after year until the state finishes billing us and then we can actually pay out the money. Because we don't want to end up over committing ourselves and coming into a situation where we have to pay the state for several projects that were a long time ago and we don't have the money. So what we typically will do is we'll budget for the items that are still outstanding. We'll budget for our portion of, for the payment of the items that we're working with the state to get them to do the reconstruction. And then whatever balance is left after all of these, after setting aside money for all these projects, we'll look towards doing a resurfacing project. And so this year, we're looking at a $400,000 difference. That's the amount that would have been left. So we're able to get a small resurfacing project. I know both Noriel and Steve May could tell you that 400,000 is not a very large project. It's not what we would like to have. It would be nice if we had some additional opportunities to do a little bit more resurfacing with our roads, but that's the balance that is left at this point. And so once we apply that as well, then you can see the projected ending fund balance is zero, although we do not expect to actually get down to zero this year.
Can I just ask a question, Steve May? What's, you don't have to come all the way up. What's the average cost per mile for resurfacing?
316,000 per mile.[1327.51][1327.51](laughing) Passed earlier.
Thank you very much.
Did you have to ask the new mayor for that answer?
That's like tearing it down. When you, when you came up with different road resurfacing work, that's tearing out the old one, regrading below and...
Those are reconstructions where the resurfacing would be just milling off the surface, a couple inches of the asphalt surface, grinding that off and putting on new.
And that's 316.
That's 316.
Per mile, if you want to put it in mile, we were using...
We've got 40 miles that need work, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
You see, it's not, it's not a case where you can just go throw asphalt on top of something. I mean, it's got to be, and that's why...
Patching and curb work and...
People don't realize how much it costs.
Yeah, that's not the road reconstruction.
Hey, one mile down, 39 more to go.
Right. Yeah.
Next year, there'll be 40 more to go.
Road reconstructions, that cost per block, right, you know, not mile. It's, it's, wouldn't you say 10 times more, eight times more?
Wow.
Thank you.
Wow. Can the village buy lottery tickets?
Put 100 bucks.
Can I do it? Because I want to go home.
Sure.
Absolutely.
All right. I think the word is bequeathed. Has any citizen bequeathed the village of Westmont money upon that person's passing? Do you have a facility for accepting money from people who are bequeathing?
Interesting thought.
I knew it would be. And by the way, I brought this up some other place and all these, talking about some of the top CEOs around, we're like, nobody's ever mentioned that before. I said, well, you're a country club. I can't believe that people who, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll give you an example. Back in 1990, the 1990s, my attorney, who I met for the first time, was doing a will for my family, and he said, why don't you put in their, you know, certain percentage for the DuPage, DuPage County Arts? I'm like, you know, I had to make a decision right there. I didn't even know who they were. I said, I, wait, do you know who...
Their attorney's on the board.
He goes, watch you to think about it. And he goes, next time you come, think of what you would like to do. And, and so when I'm sitting here looking at all these big numbers and everything, and 69,000 doesn't seem like a great sum of money, especially if somebody leaves something to you. And now you have that nice colored Westmont, which I've run three times now, and if it had a little thing at the bottom saying, I don't know if you could do that legal or not, but, I mean, you've got people like me who've lived here for 25 years, and I was in sales for 30 years, and if you don't ask the question, people aren't going to give it to you. So I don't know if it's legal to do it, it's just my idea. I don't know.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with the village accepting donations. The answer to the question, do we actively solicit them? No, we have not. But we can certainly accept them. I think we have and it's been many, many years since I think a donation has been made.
They think of their pets, they think of their country clubs.
Or church.
Well, every nonprofit and, and certainly churches, every nonprofit does it, you know, you always...
Do we have our first person now maybe considering this?
Listen. I'm sorry, I'll say that.
Thank you for that.
Well, I never had any idea that it was...
Would you like to sit up here a little closer?
Get you a cup of coffee.
Most residents probably don't know what you all go through and what this is, and I'm thinking to myself, you know, 69,000, not a great deal of money. Doesn't somebody leave like, you know, 69,000 every couple of years? Doesn't Westmont receive that from somebody who passes away, who's lived in the village?
I'm still morbid. I'd be like, I'd be checking the address. All right, ambulance, slow down.[1579.01][1579.01](laughing)
That happen?
That's terrible. I said morbid.
But you got a real nice colored pamphlet with booklet with all the, which is very, very nice. And, I don't know, maybe just a little line in there that said, I don't know how you could do it, but it has to be that easy.
That's a good idea.
Okay, that's it. But thank you, it was very informative. I'm going to go.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I'll see somebody Thursday because I'm going to sign up for the beer tent.
Good. Yes, at the, is it tomorrow?
I think it's Thursday.
Oh, I thought it was tomorrow.
The final meeting is Saturday, or we hope it's Saturday.
Saturday.
Good luck. Very well done.
Hope to see you Saturday.
Thanks, Sam.
Saturday, 9 o'clock. Thank you. Village town. Okay.
All right.
Stop.
All right, so our general fund deficit is currently 69,000. And, you know, we've talked about all the other funds. I think we've kind of walked through all of them. The IMRF Social Security Fund is one that, once we've identified all of the different personnel costs, we'll be able to calculate that. So right now, I'm just carrying forward costs from prior years, so we'll see what that is. And we'll have a, you know, after further discussion, we'll have a good estimate for you on Saturday. Any additional questions?
What'd you hear there?
Turn your mic off.
Yes. Somebody please cut Ellen's mic.
She's doing it herself.
Almost ripped the whole damn thing off.
Okay, any other questions? Anything that we would want or, you know, maybe think we would need for Saturday that the board would like Spencer to work on or provide?
So then you list that he already has.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah, he's got that list that's like five pages long, I'm sure. You know, I, I think it's coming together nicely and I'm, I'm really pleased, but really the kudos go to staff because, you know, you hear, cut expenses, cut expenses, cut expenses, you know, they're out of line. The fact is, they're not and haven't been for several years. So I really applaud our department heads and Spencer. Spencer amazes me how well-versed he is on every department in this town. So kudos to you. Kudos to you.
Good job.
Thank you. It's been a good process.
So I think we have everything we need for, to finish up hopefully on Saturday?
Hopefully, in a few years, when the TIF's up and running, there will be increased funds for the capital improvements as well as the reserves.
Hopefully.
Yeah, in two years, when Home Rule comes back, won't have to worry about some of the stuff anymore. And Steve's going to have a booth at the Taste of Westmont for bequeathing in the future, you know.
I like that idea. Thought it was a good idea. Okay, so if there's no other discussion on this, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of personnel.
So moved, Emery.
Second, Scott.
Yes. Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Mayor Protimson?
Yes.